The time being 7:00 PM, all members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Before we even start, I will let everyone know we have an extremely long agenda this evening, a lot of matters to get to. So if it can be said in one word instead of 11 words, we're going to try and keep it to that. Long-winded is not going to be anybody's friend this evening. That'll be, you know, for us as well as for your other petitioners to try and get through everything. So brevity, please. With that, first item on the agenda is approval of minutes, May 22nd, 2023.
Motion to approve the May 22nd minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Motion made or seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That moves us to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing here.
Moving on to Agenda Item B two, Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick notes tonight. First item is there is a copy, draft copy of the Housing Production Plan 2023-2027 in all of your packets. The plan is to present that to the Planning Board at the June 26th meeting and the Select Board at the June 27th meeting for review, discussion, and endorsement. And from there, I will submit it to the formerly known as Department of Housing and Community Development. I forget their new acronym, but they are now in executive office.
Okay.
So, you know, take some time over the next couple of weeks. It is a bit of a large document and come ready to discuss it next meeting. Next item here, on the horizon, there are two new applications scheduled for the June 26th meeting, a family suite special permit and a signed special permit in addition to any hearings continued this evening. And related, the filing for the 1775 Andover Street Adaptive Reuse 40B project is scheduled for a hearing on Thursday, June 29th. So they made their filing last week. Next is, as a lot of you are aware of, and this is carryover from the previous meeting, the retail marijuana licensing hearings are underway. Some of them are in progress right now in the other room, and they're scheduled for tomorrow, June 13th, as well as next Tuesday, June 20th. And those are being handled by the Select Board. And any folks who have questions about that are welcome to reach out to the Select Board's office or visit their webpage on the town website. Another note, we had a new business opening this week at 885 Main Street, Unit 6. Fringe Hair Salon celebrated their ribbon cutting on Wednesday, June 7th, and they officially opened in Tewksbury in January of this year. And we're excited to celebrate with both the Greater Lowell and the Wilmington-Tewksbury Chambers of Commerce. And the business owner, Tim, invites everyone to pay them a visit. Last item for me is that the Tewksbury Community Market is opening this Thursday, June 15th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on Livingston Street. And I invite board members as well as, you know, participants to come visit us. And it'll be every Thursday through September 28th. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B three, 935 Main Street Partial Occupancy Discussion. Do we have anybody here for 935 Main Street?
My understanding was Mr. Secconi was going to be coming back from a business trip this afternoon and was possibly not going to make it, but I'm happy to lead the discussion here if he's unable to attend.
Okay. Should we, do you want to table this?
You're welcome to table.
If he doesn't show up, we'll talk about it.
Sure, sounds good.
Anything we can move down the items?
Perfect.
All right, so we will table that item. That doesn't require a vote because it's just in the administrative action, so hold on to that. Moving on to Agenda Item C. Agenda Item C is 2 Radcliffe Road. The applicant has requested withdraw without prejudice. Do I have a motion to withdraw this without prejudice?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Quickly, Ms. Lauter, if I could just ask you to pass along, at least on my behalf, that I think that that is a very worthwhile project and I hope that they can work the bugs out of it and bring it back to us.
Absolutely.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item D, 1470 Shawshene Street. This is a special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have anybody here for 1470 Shawshene Street? Once you get settled, if you just give me your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Probably need to spin that around.
And chug the mic around, yeah.
Name is Michael Hughes. I'm the project manager from National Grid. This was a permit to, for a fence around our substation. We're upgrading the substation and upgrading the fence to our current standard, which is an eight-foot-high fence.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I mean, the need for the fence is obvious. Eight feet is harder to get over than seven feet, so I have no further concerns about this.
All right, Mr. Duffy?
Shame here, I have absolutely no concerns about that.
Mr. Duffy?
No concern. No concerns, just a couple of questions if I could. Security, a big concern, especially in Tewksbury where we are. Have there been any issues with the other station, substation down off of Main Street there on the big, big one?
No, there's a major amount of work going on right there, but it's upgrades for our relay systems and different things like that that's being done there.
I know we had fencing, fencing that was going up and barbed wire fencing as well that's going up, and we approved that, so.
Any of the stations that we're doing any work on right now, we're upgrading the station fence as part of the project.
Okay, security is still in place there?
Yes.
Okay. Just we have major concerns around the country with people sabotaging these things. And I know at one, some point, Tewksbury, hopefully is not on their agenda to do anything to it, but security always is a great thing and I'm all favor of their fencing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the chair has nothing to add as well. What is the board's, I'm sorry, is there anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this?
I just had a question.
You just give your name and your address for the record, the floor is yours.
Yep. It's Virgilio Bankerata. They're neighbors over at 1500 Shawshene Street. They have the building directly next to the substation being built. Is this something that's, this is just temporary with the substation that once the main substation's back up on order, that'll just go away with the other substation, the temp one?
The temp one, we have a mobile transformer in there. Because what we're really doing there is replacing the two transformers, upgrading them and enlarging them.
Yep.
Changing the containment to our current standard. But we had to bring in a mobile substation to carry the load so we wouldn't get any blackouts and that. During the time of construction, we planned to become a construction in November this year, and then it'll be just a matter of cleanup.
Okay.
There is a question to whether we leave the fence up or not. The fence is on our property, and then that would be just used for storage of various equipment that they, when they do in general maintenance.
Yep.
But the mobile transformer there and all that structures that are there would go away.
Okay.
The only thing that would remain is the fence itself.
Now, before that project took place, there was basically wild growth between, you know, that substation and our property and a kind of shield of the view and you couldn't see anything. And then when National Grid came in to do the project, you know, kind of leveled all that and wiped it all out. Are there plans to put any sort of vegetation back in to screen that view again?
Currently, there is not. Are you talking about all around the street or?
No, between the substation and our property.
Oh, are you the?
We're the industrial building right next door.
Gotcha, okay. When I was asking for the parking.
Gotcha, yes, yep.
There is no kind of plan to put anything along the fence, no.
Okay.
That's, that's the answer to the question.
Yep.
I can talk with you further about it and possibly do something.
Yep.
But we can talk about that.
Just to kind of help that growth get back in there a little bit quicker afterwards and kind of bring back.
Well, I do not know how far should people come in, but our fence, I believe, is up to our property line. And then anything beyond our fence is not our property. I think we only have an easement on that.
Correct, you do, yep.
But I could easily put some vegetation in if that was what you're looking for.
Yeah, just something to kind of help screen that view, that's all.
We can talk about and figure it out.
Okay, nope, appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? The one thing I'll add to is though, that if it's your intention to keep using it for anything, I'd rather you keep the fence up. Like, don't pull it down and then start putting stuff there because then everybody's going to be staring at whatever it is you're putting in there. You might as well keep the fence, you know, once it's installed, unless you're not going to be using the space.
Correct, and that's what I would do.
Okay. All right, with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made or seconded? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the special permit as requested.
I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the special permit of 1470 Shawshene Street as proposed.
All right, it's motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, thank you, goodbye. That moves us to Agenda Item E, 1879 Main Street, Treehouse Brewing Company Site Plan Review, Land Disturbance Permit. Do I have a motion?
Okay.
That one?
Do I have a motion to waive the public reading for both of those?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. What's that? Yeah, sure. Once you, once you guys have settled, if you just give me names for the record, the floor is yours.
Could you all pull that microphone a little closer too? They were having some trouble hearing.
Alex, is that TV screen private?
Making a mess.
I'm staying in the booth.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying to figure it, moving it back. Give him some more, I don't know, wheels or anything?
Yeah, it's on. Yep.
Awesome. Go ahead.
For the record, I'm Mira Cousins with Civil Design Consultants.
For the record, Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering.
Sarah Badmore with Treehouse Brewing Company.
So we're here requesting site plan approval and a land disturbance permit for the proposed overflow parking lot at 1879 Main Street. So I'm going to walk through the existing conditions. I'll go through the proposed, what we're proposing here, and we'll hand it off to Sean to talk about the traffic improvements. So the site is located at the intersection of Main Street and Airport Drive. The total lot area is approximately 2.36 acres. It has approximately 160 feet of frontage along Main Street. It's located in the mixed-use business district and within the floodplain over the district. The site is currently vacant and it's been neglected for years. It's the former site of the Funland Park, which closed about 20 years ago. Currently contains three buildings, a de-lapitated mini golf course, a racetrack at the rear of the site, and dadding gauges. Currently, there is a 20-foot-wide curb cut at the northwestern corner of the site. That's right over here. And a 60-foot-wide shared driveway at the northeastern corner of the lot with the adjacent commercial property, so that's right over there. We have a handful of resource areas on the site associated with Heath Brook, which is located on the south side of the property. It's all the way there. We had our first conservation meeting last week. The meeting went well. We are providing massive improvements to the riverfront area, buffer zones in the floodplain by removing a large amount of existing impervious area and restoring it back to natural vegetation. So currently, there are no stormwater management controls on the site, runoff flows over land in a southerly direction towards Heath Brook. So what we're proposing here is to redevelop the lot into an overflow parking lot for the Treehouse Brewing, where their main building is located across the street at 1880 Main Street. We are proposing a new driveway access on Main Street. They'll be operated as a right-in, right-out only, over here. The parking lot will provide 143 parking spaces and is intended to supplement the existing 221 spaces located across the street at the 1880 Main Street site during the tents and holidays, and will mostly be used during weekends. To address stormwater, we're proposing runoff from the entire parking lot to discharge into an infiltration basin that's located at the rear of the site. We're proposing a total reduction of approximately 17,000 square feet of impervious area, which includes a removal of approximately 16,000 square feet of impervious area within 100 feet of the riverfront area. And lastly, we show snow storage areas on the plans that are located to the east and west of the parking lot. Before I hand it off to Sean to discuss the traffic improvements, I do want to say that we did receive comment letter from DPW. The majority of the comments are pretty minor, and we'll work with DPW to make sure we address all their comments.
So before your two five, number seven, on your comments? Is there a resolution to that?
Yes, so I spoke with Ms. Cousins last week, and the plan that is really low. The plan is for them to file a special permit application to catch up to the public hearing of this one for the July 17th meeting with the understanding that the entire project can't be approved before that time. And that's just to make sure that all of the bases are covered as far as compliance of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, all right, so you're all set.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Board. Ken, for the record, Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering. We've conducted a full impact and access study to look at the impacts of this project. We've looked at the generated traffic volumes. We've looked at safety considerations. We've looked at sight lines. And all of those measures meet the applicable standards. I know we're tight on the time, so what I really want to focus on, I think, is the improvements that we're proposing, which really are related mostly to site access and also to improving pedestrian accommodations at the intersection of Main Street with Airport Road and Livingston Street. So, under existing conditions, as Mira pointed out, you know, today there's a, there's a large curb cut that serves the site, which is basically right in the intersection, the signalized intersection of Main Street with Airport Road. It's, it's really too close to the intersection to function in a way that is safe and makes any sense. So our first recommendation is to close that curb cut entirely so that, you know, vehicles are no longer entering and exiting the site, you know, directly into the signal itself. The second point of access that exists today is a shared driveway. It's about 40 feet wide on the, well, called the southern edge of the site. I think it's just off this plan, but it's shared with the Domino's Pizza. Also not an ideal access point. The Domino's traffic, you know, backs into that intersection. There's not a lot of depth there, and from a, from an operational standpoint, it really doesn't make a lot of sense for these two uses to co-mingle, if you will. So we recommended modifying that driveway as well to close it off to our site and make that driveway serve the Domino's Pizza only. With respect to the site access, what we're proposing is to have a right-in, right-out driveway. I would point out, you know, Main Street, Route 38 in this area is under mass DOT jurisdiction, so anything that we do is going to require a permit from the state. But we have submitted some preliminary plans and got some initial feedback. But the plan really is to have it so that vehicles are required to make a right-in and right-out. So left-in would not be allowed, nor would left-out. And the reason, I think, you know, is pretty straightforward. We're, we're still in quite in close proximity to the signal. The queue on Main Street, either say northbound or westbound, whichever you would worry yourself, you know, typically blocks that driveway. And we don't want to have a condition where, you know, cars are trying to pull out and to get onto Route 38 northbound when the queue's in the area. And similarly, we don't, where the northbound approach is a one lane that accommodates, you know, lefts onto Airport, which are minor, and through traffic. We don't want a condition where cars are waiting here to make a left and blocking through traffic on Route 38. So, you know, certainly, I think our plan would love to have full access, but given the location, it really makes sense from a safety and operational standpoint for this to be a right-in, right-out driveway. I expect the question will come up as to Airport Road. Airport Road's a private road. We don't have any access rights and nor will we are allowed to get any access rights. So we don't have the ability to enter into Airport to give us access to the signal itself. And lastly, the other main improvement that we're proposing is, you know, the pedestrian connections here, particularly from the project site to the main Treehouse campus. You know, they're not great. And we have this wide-open driveway here, which results in a long 75-foot crosswalk that you have to cross to the, to the north, I'll say, and then cross southeast to get back to the site. In total, it's, you know, 75 feet north and then another 70 feet southeast. So you really can't make this crossing even in one block cycle. If you were to do it correctly and safely, you could push the button across here, push the button again, and cross over. In conjunction with the closure of this driveway, you know, we're proposing, you know, some significant landscaping and also the extension of the sidewalk, a new wheelchair ramp that will connect directly across. So this shores that crossing distance from, you know, 75 to 70, 145 feet, to really a 55-foot crossing, which is, as far as for the, you know, the tenants or the business of the facility, makes a lot more sense. I think I'd only add that, you know, based on the numbers we've looked at in consultation with the client, this is not a lot that we expect is going to be used on a regular basis. Certainly, we don't expect it's going to be used much at all during weekdays. There's more than enough parking in the lot. And even on Saturdays, it's really going to be during, you know, peak events if they have a new release or it's a holiday or something along those lines that this lot may be utilized. And we've, we've conservatively assumed that 30% of the traffic would move over to here. But during typical operations, you know, our understanding is it actually wouldn't even be that much that we have in a worst-case scenario. And that's really our recommendations, again, it's focused primarily on kind of cleaning up that access, you know, getting us away from the signal and the adjacent Domino's property and really improving that pedestrian crossing so that there's a direct shot to in front of the main Treehouse facility. And that's really all I have, would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned about the fact that you're not going to be use it, using that too much, that parking? So is that for employee parking only or is it going to be for customers of Treehouse?
My saying it's, it would be for employees, it would really just be overflow parking during peak events. So that the employees would park at the main facility or perhaps the other.
We have.
You gotta move the mic over because we're not going to pick it up on the list.
Our employees park in adjacent lot to the butts, the main campus. This is intended for spot overflow. Maybe around holidays or if we have an event or if we ever get to have a golf tournament someday. It's not something we at all expect to be in February days.
So where do they park if they're not parking on site? Do you have an additional site?
Park please?
Yes.
Yep, we have an agreement with the Plaza that Market Basket is in.
So actually, just so, I stumbled upon this earlier in a conversation with Ms. Lauter. If you were standing in front of Oakdale and you were going to your left towards McDonald's, that lot that's in the back that you almost forget is there?
Yep.
Is what they're talking about.
Okay, so it's actually on the other side of the fence, tree line?
We have a paved, papered walkway and there's a gate and a fence.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right. So my concern is the fact that you mentioned that if it gets busy at all, I mean, I, what is the, I mean, the golf course is going to eventually open at some point, correct? I mean, that's going to cause a lot of traffic, as it is, besides what you have going on takeout, besides what you have going on at the facility, so, you know. So my concern is, you know, are you going to need that parking lot or is that going to be used for regular people that go to the Treehouse?
Yep, so we do expect it for overflow.
Okay.
When, when golf starts, we are really taking it slow. I know I said this the last time that we appeared. But we're not expecting a large amount of tee times or anywhere near the amount of volume in the golf courts that was previously there. So we're not anticipating any greater need during regular golfing that we have that primarily will start early in the day. So we're thinking of this lot as overflow if we do, say, have golf tournament or during the holidays when people are more festive and they're coming out. But really do not expect this at all at tee times as.
So just a scenario, somebody comes to 1880 Main Street, drives into the parking lot, and there's no parking. How do they know that the parking is across the street?
So in those, hopefully, rare instances, we have a job description at all of our locations, which is a parking attendant. It's a very specific job location, job description, skills. They don't hop behind the bar, they don't work on the golf course. They are trained parking attendants. Each of our locations, we have them work with recreation, DPW, police, life safety, all of that. So we get feedback from all of the life safety folks. So in the event that that lot is closed off, we will have signage that is provided to that. And we'll have our own attendants, all shifts at all the time, as we do now in the parking lot in 1880. And then in those instances where we will have overflow, we'll also have parking attendants in the overflow lot across the street.
So another issue I see, and it's more on a safety issue for, if that's the case, and a parking attendant says, yeah, go park over across the street, 1879, okay? They come out of the Livingston Street, and how do they get to the parking lot?
They would, they would make a left into Livingston, put on the traffic light, make a left-hand turn at the light, and then make the right-hand turn into the parking lot. And we've actually looked at some of the volumes and run some analyses. And we, quite frankly, that length, the way it operates today can be improved to optimization of the timing and something that we're committed to working with DOT if they're on board with what we're suggesting. We would implement those changes too to make that length work better. Simply to give some additional green time to that Livingston Street approach.
Okay. Just seems like it's going to be very, very tight there for someone to come up Livingston Street, take a right, and then a hard left into your parking lot because it's right turn in and right turn out.
That's right.
So you see that as a problem at all? Or will Mass DOT see that as a problem for you?
We haven't submitted a formal application to DOT for highway access permit because we need to get the local approval from the municipality first. But we have submitted preliminary plans and got some feedback. And there were no, no comments that said this is a non-starter, that it was really more detail-oriented, the location of the aisle, the location of the curbing, probably, in some detail. So at least at first glance, it appears that Mass DOT has shown some support for this, yes.
Yeah, okay. Just some concerns I have. I know where the location is. I know it's a very, very busy intersection there. Traffic is pretty tough there as it is, and now adding another 143 parking spaces on the other side of the street for your use, it just seems like it's going to be a traffic nightmare and a crisscrossing nightmare for, for people that parked there and then walk across the street for you, back and forth, back and forth. It just seems like it's going to be a lot, a lot of busyness there for, for you guys, for the new restaurants that are there, the new bakery that's there. So I just don't know how someone's going to make that turn and get into that parking area. So those are like some of my concerns, you know, just preliminary. What else do I have here? I have, so you, did you try to get access from Airport Road?
It's not a public way, it's a private way.
Yeah, did you get, tried, did you try to work out a deal with those at all?
Yes, as did everyone who's come before this on the, on the site and it was refused. We don't expect that to happen.
No, okay. So with regard to the property, is that silt fence coming down at some point? About 1880, the silt fence that's blocking headlights there and so forth?
Oh, across the street?
Yes.
Yep, we have plantings that we have approved, and those are going in. Our landscapers are finishing up the exterior of the building this week.
Okay, I just see that as part of the whole package here and there and so forth, you know, so. There was, there was an issue as far as the distance from the parking lot to the site on 1880. Is that, has that been resolved? There wasn't a measurement as far as how far it was from the parking lot to the site.
It has to be 50, 500 feet from the site facility. I was curious if that was from the property line or it has to be all the way to the building.
So you're referring to comment number eight on my review?
Is that the number? I know, I have my notes here, the daily, the distance from one side to the other.
Yes, so that's, it has to be to the lot where the use is happening. So it'll be from lot line to lot line. It's not from like the furthest parking spot in the back of the lot to the, you know, front door of the facility.
So did we get a distance for that or not yet?
Um, not yet, they haven't submitted revisions yet, but that's something they're going to provide, yep.
Do you know what the width of 38 is there?
It varies, I believe.
Well, you just said that crosswalk is 55 feet. So if we add five feet for two crosswalks, 65 feet.
So there's, there's literally no way that it's not 500 feet from the property line to property line?
That would be impossible.
Right? So I'm saying it's a moot point. If the road is 50-something feet across and you put sidewalks on either side, unless those sidewalks are each 200 feet wide, we're nowhere near closing in on 500 feet between the two lot lines. They have to be within 500 feet of each other. Okay, so.
Okay, all right, I'm all set for now, and I'm sure we'll have some more later on. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious where on the, on, you know, where you are with engineering. I know they had 11 outstanding items. I was wondering if you, like, where you are on addressing those items.
Yeah, so we received that last week on Wednesday, so we'll work through those comments this week. I'll reach out to the town engineer.
Okay, I like the idea. You did mention valet. I mean, I think that, you know, short of putting an Arthur Fila Bridge across 38 there, that, that might not be a terrible idea because obviously crossing the street for people is going to be the.
Sorry, maybe, maybe I heard that wrong. You did not say valet parking, right?
Oh, the chair, no, I did not say that. I said.
Professional parking attendants?
Yep, we have, we have a staff, a whole job code for parking attendants. That is the rule.
Okay, my mistake, I misheard that.
But they're, they're there to answer questions, direct cars, keep things clean and tidy. So they monitor and they're on.
No matter how you slice it, it's going to be a funky area to cross the street. And hopefully, there won't be any, any serious issues there. So we'll just kind of leave it at that for now. Uh, I think probably some sort of an assist from the company to, as far as getting people parking there. Um, you know, some kind of formalized assist might, might not be a terrible idea. And then I guess just the drainage, um, you, you know, you're looking at no onsite drainage, it's all gonna filter off of the, off of the back of the lot there, is that?
We're proposing an inf- sorry. So we're proposing an infiltration basin at the rear of the site, so we're here.
Yep.
So runoff will sheet flow off the parking lot in a southerly direction, and enter that infiltration basin.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean, my primary, I understand you're working through a lot of engineering issues, and, you know, hopefully they're minor, and you make good progress with that. My primary concern really is with not only traffic buildup at that intersection, which gets very busy. Um, if, so, my comments are all gonna be under the assumption, if you build it, they will come. At some point, you're gonna park a hundred and sixty or so cars in this lot, which means we have between two hundred and forty, three hundred and twenty people that need to cross the street. If it's a event with a particular start time, uh, like a major release or something like that, that's a lot of people that have to cross the street, all in a very condensed amount of time. Uh, which means multiple signaling, things like that. So it does kinda build up a sort of worst-case scenario. Couple of immediate concerns is, I see where your new crosswalk proposal is. I think a lot of cars see that as a right-turn lane to go right on red at, um, onto Livingston. And I think if people are crossing, and there's a truck, like a Market Basket truck parked at that intersection facing north, that the people are just walking across, they step out from behind the truck, somebody else is going. Um, I think that's a very real possibility, that, that could be sort of a dangerous spot there, a dangerous situation. So I do like the idea of, of shortening the crosswalk overall for the ease of pedestrians. But I think because that does become two lanes with a right-turn lane, I think, and I don't know, I would like to think Mastod would probably pick up on that, but also, the engineer from Mastod doesn't live in Tewksbury, and doesn't drive through that intersection literally every single day. Uh, so, that's just something that I see there as a possibility. Um, and that would be, in terms of pedestrian safety, one of my main concerns. The other would just be that if you do have a major event, um, you know, the, the traffic situation might be better controlled through police details or something like that, to try to get everybody across quickly, um, and then hopefully just return the lights to their normal signalization. My other question would be, would that crosswalk fall under, and I, I, right now, I don't think we have any kind of walklights right there. So what, is it your intent that Mass DOT would add some sort of crosswalk signaling there as part of the overall light scheme for that intersection?
Sure, well, with any of the work that, that would be done, uh, would be done by the applicant, not by Mass DOT. We, we filed for the permit, the approvals, but it wouldn't be on, there wouldn't be the state that would be building it. But that's absolutely right, there would be a walk, don't walk, flashing indicator. I'll follow the current standards with the, with the curving audible indicators, the countdown heads, you know how much time you have to cross the street. So it would be a, it would be an upgrade beyond what's up there today.
Okay, um, so I had one thought. Having my concerns, as I was reviewing your plans, I had one thought. The main entrance to the brewery is further south, on the other side of your proposed curb cuts.
Sure.
So, down in the south end of Tewksbury, um, where South Street meets Main Street, we recently put in a pedestrian crosswalk with an island, and it has curb cuts and all of that, and just dedicated flashing pedestrian crosslights. Um, if you were to go further south, you could eliminate the issue of multiple, um, lanes of traffic coming through that area, and potentially, you know, people need a, a chance to cross. But usually those signals also have a lane of traffic going at the same time, and they're not expecting the, uh, pedestrians to be crossing at the same time, unfortunately. So, I don't know if Mass DOT would be opposed to you moving your crosswalk out of the intersection, and just making it dedicated for, um, just for your event, and that might be a lot easier to manage, rather than interfering or, um, reconditioning the signaling in that intersection.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can certainly, you know, discuss with them, but I, I, I think quite frankly, when we close that, that driveway, the intersection itself, they're gonna wanna see a pedestrian cross and formalize there, because whether, you know, people may wanna walk closer to the, to the actual facility across the street and cross, there, there really needs to be a, a better pedestrian crossing at the intersection itself. Um, and typically, you know, the, a signalized crossing at the intersection is, is preferred over mid-block crossing, you know, because the mid-block crossing really doesn't have any knowledge as to what's going on at the signal, so you could have someone push the button to cross right as traffic's starting to, you know, come down the corner, and now they're forced to stop a second time in the middle of the road. So I, my sense is DOT is probably gonna prefer having it at the signal itself at the intersection, but we can, we can serve them where they're, um, suit their preferences.
Okay. Um, so, all of my other questions and concerns are really related to the items that are pending from our various services. So, I, other than that, I have no personal comments at this time.
Alright, Mr. Zai?
Um, yeah, just kinda further on the traffic a little bit. So you get this right turn only onto thirty-eight. For traffic that needs to go northbound, how are they supposed to turn back around?
Well, they have to go and, and, and take a revert, uh, diverted route. They would need to exit the site and either go down to Shawshin at the signal there, make a left or a right, and, and find their way back a different way.
They're, they're having like, cutting through the Market Basket parking lot there?
I mean, there, there's a potential that some would do that, if they felt that was a quick picture. But, uh, you know, in, in balance, if, if the customers are forced to, to make a longer route, we think that it's a, it's still a better scenario than having them make these left-hand turns so close to the signal itself.
Um, then I think my other question, the only other thing I had, was, it doesn't look like there's any bike racks or anything in this lot. Are there bike racks in the main lot that cover that, or?
We do show a bike rack.
You do? Am I dismissing it?
Right over here.
Okay. Alright.
On sheet C three.
Okay, I, that enters my question, um, and no further questions.
Alright, so, uh, one, is there gonna be signage on this one to indicate that it's your parking lot? I mean, other than the person that might be directing people to go over there, what, what lets people know that this is yours and they should use it?
We would like that, yes, it's not something that we put an application in, um, yet for.
Okay, so then that's something separate that's gonna have to come in?
Yep, oh, not necessarily, it's included in, um, my comments, but if there's a master signage plan that you want to include, I'm just making sure that, um, it either meets the bylaw, or they ask for the appropriate waivers to incorporate it into the site plan approval.
Now, as, as far as the parking, um, attendants or whatever, so in the winter months, how does that work? Are they in some, like, vehicle that people can tell that's what they're in? Does it say parking or anything like that? How do they?
Our, our folks are outside all year round at all.
So they're wandering the parking lot in the winter?
Uh, I, I wouldn't say wandering, but yep, they're out there all winter, Charleston Sandwich, um, South Deerfield, yeah.
Okay.
Really outdoorsy.
Well, at least they are.
I think everyone, everyone at your house is pretty outdoorsy.
Uh, alright, okay, um, okay. Um, I wanna pick up on what was asked about the signaling, you know, I mean, as you look around now, that a lot of times you see there are different types of, uh, crosswalk indication signs, you know, all sorts of different types now. But to, to Mr. Champ's comment, it was one that I'd already thought about, which is that it's commonly a right turn only there, and people take that right, because more often than not, the cars that are coming from the north aren't taking that many lefts there anyways, as much as, you know, just simply up and down. But the rights definitely happen, so one way or the other, that's gonna have to be addressed with either the right stop, and there are no more turns on red, or there has to be some sort of sign that indicates that people are crossing. Something that goes off when that button is pressed, that's sitting right there in the face of the person who's in that right lane, saying no turn, pedestrians crossing, or whatever it needs to be. But something flashing in their face that says, this is different than it is when nobody's coming across, when you can go. Something's coming, because to Mr. Champ's, uh, point, you know, it could be a box truck, it could be whatever, you know, when I, I, this is a pretty long cross, so I don't want people to be starting off, you know, safely on one side, just to find themselves facing whatever, just as they're about to hit the sidewalk on the other side sometime later. So something's gonna have to be done, so you guys are gonna have to let us know what that's gonna be, but it's gotta be, in addition to whatever else is going on, something that's gonna give some indication and safety for those folks crossing, and to be absolutely certain that someone's not gonna take that right on red, and find themselves facing a couple of pedestrians coming across the street. Certainly, you know, as this first gets going, that's gonna be a very new thing for a lot of folks. Maybe over time, it becomes less so, but I'm more concerned with what's happening at the beginning, and making sure that that does not happen, and we're not facing a horrible problem there with people.
It's, it's a good point, and, and frankly, what you see a lot of times is where you have a, a split-phase situation, where, you know, Airport and Livingston operate on separate phases. They'll provide with sometimes an overlap phase, so when, when Livingston's southbound gets the green, they, I call it, uh, westbound thirty-eight, or, or northbound thirty-eight, we get a green arrow, which will let them know they can make the free right while Livingston has the green, and they can also make that right when they have the green ball themselves. But then there'd be a red arrow that comes on with a sign that says, you know, no right on red on red arrow, so when, that, that red indicator would come on every time the pit was.
Which is fine, but that does not exist at present, so that would be a change, something, but like I said, it has to be something very distinct, that is gonna let people know who have been making that right turn for, you know, fifty years. You know, I, I mean, I don't have Mr. Folly here to confirm when the light went in, but, you know, however long that's been, there are people who've been taking that right, and, you know, football, lacrosse, whatnot, people leaving McDonald's and heading right up to head up to the park, you know, have done that for as long as most of them can remember, and they're gonna have to watch out now on, you know, a Saturday or something, when most likely you might be using this lot. Um, so whatever that plan's gonna be, we need to know what that's gonna be, to make sure that that, that isn't something that'll happen. On the, um, on the current site, what's the, what if any plan do you have to make it possible for those folks coming across the street to come onto your lot? Or are you gonna make them walk all the way around the pickup building to come in? Are you cutting some sort of path into the current landscaping? When they come across the street to come onto your lot, or are you gonna make them walk all the way around? Now that just gets you across the street.
Yeah.
Now be across the street, and you're standing at the grass line of the Treehouse. Um, and right now, that's all landscaped, you know, from the sign, heading towards the corner. If you cross the street, you're now faced with either walking across the grass, which would seem ill-advised, or walking all the way down or up Livingston, till you get to the delivery or the pickup building, and going next to it, around it, or whatever, that doesn't seem like a, you know, like a good way to go about it, so.
Yeah. So right now, yeah, we just show it onto the existing sidewalk, we don't have a walkway connecting through the landscaped area, if you wanna add to it.
Sure. So we're really looking to get comments from all the various stakeholders here before we made that plan, but it, it is always our intent to make things as easy and convenient and safe for our guests as possible. So that would be the next step, is to take a look at.
So, to, to extend from that, 'cause I'm picturing, picturing the way it looks now, that's kind of one of the biggest drive lanes. As you would come over that grass area, one of the widest parts of the parking lot where people drive, is what you'd probably walk right into. So, what I would then say is that something that, when you come across there, indicates that that's where people should walk. Some sort of lattice, you know, walk line, lane for those pedestrians coming in and out, reflective, whatever it needs to be, to make sure that folks, you know, you got the aisle in there, so I would presume some lighting to make sure that that's a well-lit path, for people to go back and forth to the building over to the parking lot. Okay. Um, I mean, I, like I said, my, my guess is that's where it's gonna probably end up, but, you know, to you guys tell us, I don't know, it's just a guess. Um, Mr. Champ's comment to on, um, details. I, I asked Ms. Lauter, 'cause I mean, it's not something we have to do very often. This is a bit of a unique situation, 'cause we are trying to cross thirty-eight here. There may be six circumstances, bigger events, those kind of schedule-type things, you know, not your typical average Saturday that just gets busy, that isn't sensible. But, there may be some wisdom in setting something up, that if you're gonna have a big release potty, you know, especially something that's done in the months when you are gonna have golf potentially going at the same time, there's a very good chance you are going to be using, you know, a significant amount of that overflow parking throughout the day. And my guess is for those kind of things, it's gonna be rotated. People are in and out, it's not, they're coming at eight and staying till five, it's, you know, people are moving. I could see events like that be, that being something that we may want to put in place. Ms. Lauter was gonna look into it a little bit more, how we go about that, 'cause she gave me the example of Raytheon. When Raytheon lets out in the evening, there is a detail officer there every single night. But that's Raytheon letting out, that's easy to understand why that's going on every single night when they let out, it's hundreds of cars coming out onto North Street. That made sense, because you can, you just know, Monday through Friday, that's what's happening. Your, your thing's a little different, because it's gonna be a bit of a more one-off, when those kind of events where you're gonna have, you know, a reasonable expectation of busyness. Busyness beyond the norm. Um, so I, you know, I think we need to look at how that might work, and how we can fold that in to make sure that, um, you know, whether it's mandatory, or it's something where you have to check with public safety, and find out what their feelings are based on what you tell them your event is. Yeah, that's gonna be a problem in thirty-eight, if we don't have somebody moving people along.
Absolutely, um, and, and we, that is the standard of all of our locations. Um, one of the things we've done in our, uh, expansion in the last couple of years is, we don't have all of our fans coming to one site, we've spread across the state. So we're in South Deerfield, we're in Cape Cod, um, we're in Charlton, now we're north of Boston, so happy to be here. So you don't really have that, oh, there's a new release, and everybody is flocking to this one spot. We've kind of spread folks across the state. Um, and then also, in each of the municipalities that we operate in, we have a great, uh, close communication with all of life safeties, police and fire. Um, constantly checking in, our tougher managers and general managers welcome those folks to us all the time. And we welcome the feedback, because safety and security and a comfortable time is the best thing we want for our guests. So you can absolutely expect us to do that as, as we do in all of our municipalities. And we think it's going to be, um, higher than regular volume, we always, um, ask for that assistance, so.
Alright, so let's try to figure out this, another one I'm trying to think of, and I'm pretty sure they do it on their own, it has nothing to do with us, but Big Mabonis has one on, you know, Saturdays in the spring, I think, it seems to be somebody out there. Um, I've seen them do it at the bakeries around holidays, so those are the kind of more one-off idea that I'm trying to think of, um, of how that will, how we can fold that in, maybe.
Yeah, we'll welcome suggestions from, um, police and, and fire.
So, the last thing I'll do is, you know, just from a, just sort of bigger picture, idea of the thing itself. Um, to me, I feel like this, you know, we've, we've had a few things come up for this property. You know, it has, it has certain limitations and logistical problems for a lot of different types of businesses. The most recent, I think, was cowwash. It didn't seem to fly very much with, you know, anybody on the board at the time, um, because it just didn't seem to make, you know, logistical sense. For this, I feel like it, this may be about as good as we're gonna get for that piece of property that isn't gonna cause more problems, uh, to the community, because I have a feeling that Treehouse is gonna be fairly busy. I think we all think that, you want that. That's going to happen, whether this becomes a satellite parking lot or not, which means those cars are gonna be around, regardless of whether they actually have someplace to park or not, um, you know, should the lot fill up. You know, then they're gonna go find creative parking, uh, you know, whether it be, you know, inappropriately parking over at Market Basket, or across the street and screwing up the bakery, or one of the restaurants over there. Um, which I don't think we want, I don't think that's good for their business, um, it's gonna cause friction for you and your neighbors, um, I don't think that's useful. Uh, most of the proposals that I think, you know, you could possibly put in at this site are only gonna add to the problem without providing any real benefit. I think this is, might be the most beneficial use of that property, and affecting the least amount of people, and causing the least amount of pain. Um, and if anything, relie- relieving that potential pain, um, on a Saturday, or Sunday, you know, or a busy day. Um, and I think the, the, the limitations on the turns make that better, because the last thing we want is somebody turning off of thirty-eight going north, that's just not gonna work, so they're gonna have to find. My guess is you, that part of the flow makes sense to me. You would go into Treehouse, find out you didn't have room, you'd come out, come up to the light, you take the left, you take the right, you go into satellite parking. That flow makes sense to me, from a, you know, you would try the main parking lot first, you come out, okay. You know, when you leave, as Mr. Zai pointed out, how someone determines how they get home from there is sort of up to them, you know, whether they wanna follow the correct rules, or they find some creative way to get back in the direction they wanna go. Nothing you can really do about that, there's no way for us to legislate against, you know, poor decision-making, but, um, from my point of view, I think that this is about as beneficial and as low impact as we're gonna find for a spot that's right in that intersection. Um, so, just my, my feelings on that. So with that, I will open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience, any questions, comments, or concerns?
I just, Tim Use.
Name and your address?
Uh, Tim Use, I'm representing eighteen seventy-five B Main Street. My all concern is about the traffic, the lights, and the traffic. My all concern is about the traffic, the lights and the traffic. The right turn at the Livingston Street now is basically an off ramp, whether the light is red or green. The cars don't stop there at all, so there needs to be extra precautions there. And the timing of the lights for the whole air intersection needs to be on a regular time. Right now, the the lights are ground censored on Livingston and Airport Road. And I've been there where there's been twenty, if the car, the first car doesn't line up right, there's twenty cars on Livingston Street. If I get to my end of my driveway, if I don't hit it the right timing, I've waited three, four light cycles there. And then you add a cro- crosswalk signals and then that's mostly my concern is is just traffic timing. And an island at that intersection would be a nightmare, uh, cuz trucks can't turn into the airport road. If you put a crosswalk island like you did at Ch- Salem Street. That you wouldn't be able to turn into the.
I suppose it was if you were further south away from the intersection.
Yeah, but you were talking about having the crosswalk go right through the island.
But on the, on the south side.
Yeah, but that's that's, no, the crosswalk is up at the lights.
I propose moving the crosswalk and.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I wanted to get the whole thing away from the intersection.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
We're all pointing and, you know, waving, so.
So, um, thank you for your questions. I I I suspect the answer to that again is back to Mass DOT. You know, they're really the ones who are gonna run that show, um, in terms of the lighting and signaling and whatnot. We don't find ourselves with very much control over that, other than to insist on making sure that we do have enough safety signaling there. I have no idea what Mass DOT does.
No, the the way it works is typically it's a three step submission process. You submit your twenty five percent, seventy five hundred, and then your final plan, so it's, the DOT has three bites of the apple to read the plans, but there's no, there's no hearing process.
And uh, the gentleman, because he was off mic, just in case it didn't get picked up, his question was just asking about DOTs. Whether they have a hearing process or what their process is, so whoever's watching at home or documenting this later, that was what, that was what the off mic question was. All right, any, anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Only once, twice, uh, right back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing.
All right, so we have seven ten on the twenty sixth. So take the motion to continue it to seven ten on the twenty sixth. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all is in favor, signify by saying aye. All is opposed, motion carries. All right, and we'll see you next time. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item F, which is sixteen hundred Shawshin Street. Uh, this is site plan review, special permit, land disturbance permit. We have a motion to waive the public reading.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Motion carries, hear this. Do we have anybody here for sixteen hundred Shawshin Street?
Yes, he's just gonna do it.
And just to know, Mr. Chairman, for the room's benefit and the board members' benefit, there are two applications that are cited under sixteen hundred Shawshin Street. The first one up for discussion is the one filed by National Development uh on behalf of Holton Bugbee. The Holton Bugbee dedicated hearing will be the second one.
If you need more chairs, they're in the back maybe.
If you have an additional chair, we'll probably just call up our traffic consultant or traffic section.
If you just state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
So, um, I'm Daniel Moore with National Development, um, representing uh on behalf of Holton Bugbee, which is the current current property owner, now at the podium. And then this is Matthew Costa with uh Bezos and Associates, which is the acting civil engineer on the on the project.
All right, floor is yours, gentlemen.
So to start, we're here to to discuss um what we refer to as Lot One within the sixteen hundred Shawshin proposed redevelopment. And so on the board, to to my right is an overview of the existing conditions of parcels currently occupied by Holton Bugbee parcel owners. Um, on April twenty fourth, we received endorsement for a proposed A and R plan, which would subdivide this parcel into two sections. To the right of this sheet in front of us, we have the Lot One section, if we refer to it. And to the left, uh, which is faint line, if you can see, is a, is that barb- barbell or dumbbell lot that we created that we refer to as Lot Two. The intent is that on Lot One, we will program a speculative warehouse, hundred eighty thousand square feet of footprint. With an additional ten thousand of um available mezzanine space within the structure uh to be constructed based on future tenant needs. Uh, delivery will likely just be about a hundred eighty thousand square feet of of warehouse space. We'll do a quick overview of the site, point out a few features. So to the right, you can see the context for both this redevelopment as well as the future redevelopment that we'll speak to on the next attendant item. This is the hundred eighty thousand square feet warehouse. On the north portion of the site, that's where we expect truck traffic will be flowing through. So trucks will enter the site prior to reaching the residential component of the neighboring uh areas. Mid block is a vehicular curb cut for the.
Just one second. Gentlemen, gentlemen, if you don't mind, if you have side conversations, I'm gonna have to ask you to take them outside. The room's too small. It gets picked up on the microphone, so we're hearing everything that's caught, you guys are talking about in the back. So if you have side conversation, you're gonna have to take them out in the hall, all right?
We're all set. We're just wondering the times, that's all.
What?
The times that, the different things were supposed to be out.
Yeah, those are just a guideline, so, cuz we can't hold the hearings before the hearing is listed, but when we get to them is kind of dependent on the hearing before it.
So this curb cut will be a modification of existing curb cut. This will be a brand new post curb cut that's mid block for the vehicular pedestrian um access. And some miscellaneous uh trailer storage in the back, as well as some um landscape improvements on the Shawshin frontages that we're doing. If you look at the existing conditions, a good chunk of this section is existing in previous area that we're creating. And what we're contributing back is landscaped area. So the intent of this discussion is to request a site plan review special permit uh for the intended use. Uh, for the intended layout of the site. Um, we were also looking for a special permit to increase the height. Uh, which is allowable within planning board jurisdiction, within the sixty feet, but we're actually just looking for forty six feet. And then we're also looking for a special permit to reduce the required parking spaces by thirty percent via the reserved parking mechanism, which we'll certainly outline as we. As we go through the specifics of the site. And additionally, we're in for a land disturbance permit, given the the volume of the development that we're proposing. From the zoning perspective, um, we're, we are complying with all of the prescribed dimensional um regulations for the zoning bylaws. Uh, with the exception of that height that we're requesting the variance on, so this table is just intended to provide a viewpoint, a comparison between the required dimensional requirements. And the provided, and you can see, uh, we meet the uh requirements for for all the stated items.
If you wouldn't mind, just for everybody, anybody who's trying to figure it out, the current requirement is what in feet?
Is in in terms of.
What what is the, without a waiver, what what is the height, like, what's the height limit?
Yeah, correct.
Forty six, thank you. Okay.
Again, just to give some context as well, this is the the intended trailer parking or trailer entry for the site. Vehicular part, uh vehicular entrance, and this is the reserved parking area, so we shaded this in gray, but this, if if the waiver is granted, would just be landscaped area. Another feature that we're pointing out is with this landscaping plan is, is the improvements from sightline conditions. So through our traffic study, one of the things that. One of the things that we found is that uh a number of the trees on this section of the site were not in compliance with just industry standard recommendations in terms of sight like plot, sideline proximity. Um, through our, through our efforts on landscaping, we're both keeping a number of existing trees, but also moving some of those back or just planting new trees in those locations. Just to clean up this curb, um, it's a pretty busy uh road in terms of uh viewer speeds, so just try to try and create a safer condition.
And just for clarification, cuz I'm not sure if I heard you, but the 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 driveway towards the top of the page, did you say that was for the for the trucks? Is that only for the trucks?
Yes, yes, so from a, so you'll see the free stinging sign, callouts here and here. This free stinging sign is not necessarily branding for the building. That's just directional signage for the trucks. We intend through a management program to come through and make sure that all the trailers are using this this entrance. They're not gonna be able to make this turn anyway. This is just for regular passenger vehicles.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't thinking, I was thinking it the other way around, that passenger vehicles aren't gonna try and go in that one and out that one.
Sure, I mean, there, there wouldn't give area stopping them to to do so, um, but we would have signs that that notes that's for deliveries only. And would direct people down the, down the street to the. As a small, this is just an emergency access track to allow for that full circulation of fire trucks from the building that have these signs, do not enter.
Okay.
One of the other nuances to point out is ADA and EV stations are in front, so we are including four EV spaces as part of our parking plans for sustainability goals. Uh, and ESG initiatives. And um, again, just just reiterate, reiter- reiterating the uh the landscape and the previous area that that we are contributing back to the the site. The other feature that we that we're doing along the tree plan is we're working with some of the existing grid and and modifying it to create burning along Shawshin Street. We have a rendering that'll show some perspective, but uh since you were, we're wanting to utilize that burning as a a visual screen. Aside from just having the the tree structures there to to shield the view of the warehouse for any of the residents that are across Shawshin Street. Providing some elevations to give some visual context in terms of the scale of the structure. Uh, so calculating the average building height um based on the different frontages, as well as the the mean average grade on the site. Um, the proposed height is forty five point eight uh feet in in height. Uh, the actual structure itself is forty, is just over forty four, but again, given the mean average grade, bringing that that average grade down below the finished floor elevation. We're calculating at forty five point eight feet. The lo- the tallest facade, just to point out some rear section of of the uh, the the building, so this loading option, so. The height would actually decrease or pitch towards the uh, the right of way, the Shawshin Street front. And then the the last thing we have for you is some uh some renderings, just to give some visual. So this rendering is showing, as you're coming down Shawshin Street, to the right, you've got the vantage point of the trailer entrance. Um, just given that that's probably the most proximate view as you're making that that drive down. Um, again, it'll highlight the the screening, a little placeholder there for the signs that will direct truck traffic into that loading area. And the next rendering we have. Describes for landscaping a bit more, shows some of the burning, um, and some of the great work that we're doing along Shawshin Street, just to provide that visual screen.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump ahead of something that's probably gonna be said to you anyways. That's great in terms of shielding the building from people across the street in the residential area, but it could be my eyes, but. Every one of the trees that I see there, are they all trees that were, the leaves are gonna fall off in the winter?
So we have a combination of deciduous, deciduous trees and some trees that will shed in the winter. Matt, you might be able to speak to the landscaping plan a little bit better.
Yeah, so the existing trees that are out there now are all um evergreen trees, but they are the larger, they're all kind of full growth pine trees that are out there right now. So that's why we've shown them as that, which is, you know, stumps down the bottom, the big twenty four inch type trees. So you'll see in our landscaping plan, we've actually added more evergreens behind that, so you'll also be shielded down below. And then that ten foot burn would have same thing, evergreen trees, so there's over.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the most important thing, because the people across the street aren't gonna, you know, if the building suddenly jumps out at them six months of the year.
Sure.
You know, maybe I'm overestimating winter, but. I just feel that way. Um, it feels like it's happening, but, you know, that's, that's gonna be incredibly important. I mean, I don't know how many people in this room are here for this.
Sure.
But I can pretty much tell you that that's gonna be the one of the biggest questions we, what are we staring at every time we look outside? Especially if you're asking for, you know, a height.
Sure.
Addition on what it would normally be, what are we looking at? Or what are we not looking at is probably the most important thing, so.
Fair point. In our submission, we do have a landscaping plan. We have noted the different species types in different areas, so we can certainly review those with with yourself and with your butters. Um, and and again, that's part of the introduction of the burning as well as to provide that, just just grading screen in the absence of of any foliage or winter conditions.
Okay, all right. Did you have anything else to add for that?
So we have additional information, but obviously we want to take a break here. We can, we can cover the underground utilities and stormwater plan and then what when the decency is, but. If more at request, we know that's a a busy agenda, so I can move it together.
So you you have a traffic uh. So why don't we do that, because I wanna try and have everything in one.
Sure.
Lap if we can.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Heather Monocup with Greenman Peterson, and we are the uh traffic engineers for the proposed project. Uh, quickly, we did a full traffic impact and access study. It was dated May fifth, two thousand twenty three. We looked at existing conditions, future conditions in two thousand twenty nine. Looked at public transportation, traffic volumes, volume adjustments, collision, speeds, site distances, future volumes. Um, we did trip generation based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the I T E Trip Generation Manual. Uh, we did counts at the existing site. We assumed that, um, I guess I should say, first off, the traffic study included both developments. Lot one and lot two that you're gonna hear tonight, so the volumes that we counted on the site today were included. We assumed, even though there there is um expected to be a reduction in operations in the H and B, we still assumed all those traffic volumes would stay. We relocated those and then added the um warehouse volumes. Uh, we, and then we conducted capacity and queue analysis, and we found that impacts along Shawshin Street at the intersections that we looked at. Uh, we're not expected to add more than two seconds of additional delay to any movement. Um, therefore, the, based on the findings of the study, uh, the proposed warehouse redevelopment can safely and efficiently accommodate. Be accommodated along the existing roadway network, and we don't um anticipate any necessary mitigation uh for project specific. Mitigation is warranted uh based on the incremental impacts of the project, so that's a quick summary, but I can answer any other questions that you have based on the study.
Just one thing, you know, uh, the, when you did the future, when you used the future uh traffic, did that include the potential of? How many do we have up there? One, two?
Two marijuana dispensaries? It included both of them.
Okay, so in the event, for some reason, we put two of them there, you took that into account.
Yep, yeah, those were the background developments.
Next door, you guys can go talk to them, that's, I just, I just wanna make sure it's included.
When we were doing the study, we had that exact question, is our, is it gonna be two, but we said we have to include them because we can't make that decision at this time, so we did include that traffic as well.
Chairman, on those same lines, did you include the uh train tracks there that have stoppages once in a while?
Uh, well, we didn't, there's no intersection there, so we, I mean, we analyzed uh old stagecoach. We analyzed um the three proposed site driveways at Vale and uh the signalized intersection to the north.
How about when the train is crossing Shawshin and to back up, that that occurs once in a while?
Uh, we, we haven't looked at that specifically.
Neither did the retail marijuana people either, cuz it was brought up by Mr. Chair- Chairman, Chairman Johnson, and uh, it's extensive at some points.
At some points.
I was, I told them and I'll tell you that, watching a soccer game in the area, I counted a hundred cars. Train track, train cars going by at one look, at one time, watching a soccer game. So it does get backed up at at times, so just, just FYI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, actually, if you wouldn't mind sticking around for just a second, cuz I'm gonna do this in reverse.
Sure.
I'm gonna go through the the board for any traffic questions anybody has, that way we can do that, you know, the other way around. Mr. Champ?
So I like the improved sightlines. Um, I like the direction of the traffic. The, I know there were some questions, I thi- and I think this is more housekeeping as far as there's regulations, as far as where your driveway entrance is, the distance apart. And how far away they have to be. Um, I assume those housekeeping items will be taken care of on your plans?
Correct, and dimension compliant, we'll, we'll show those in terms of adding dimensions to the plans, but I believe what you're referring to is the the two hundred foot distance. From intersections, we do comply as as per the current plan. We'll just note those distances uh on our our resubmission.
Okay, and I guess this is maybe traffic adjacent. Um, what would be your delivery hours for the largest trucks?
Sure, so the part of the the proposed program is is speculative, so we do not have a tenant in mind yet. Uh, we're actively working through pre leasing efforts, um, but it's slightly dependent in terms of the tenant that that we're able to secure for the for the facility.
Okay, cuz I imagine that would be a really big concern for the neighbors.
Sure.
Um, certainly Market Basket has heard their fair share of issues over the years. Um, I don't know if that's within our purview to restrict access at this point or not, where we don't actually have a tenant, but. But it is a residential neighborhood. but it is a residential neighborhood, I I feel they're entitled to, um, you know, a good night's sleep.
It's one of those push and pulls, because we're talking about, that's also, that's not a residential area.
True.
So it's sort of, you know, putting a limit on something that you're told in advance you're allowed to do becomes problematic potentially. I mean, obviously nighttime, heavy nighttime deliveries would be frowned upon.
Sure.
I don't know that we're in a position right now to say, you can't do it, but I suppose we could put something in where if in the event that that becomes an issue, we're gonna revisit it. And then we can discuss it at a future date.
It seems reasonable.
If I could, the majority of your trucks, as as mentioned, residential neighborhoods mostly focus here, but a lot of your industrial development's up top here. So most of your trucks are all gonna be coming from the highway up towards that way, and to be adventurous here, won't have a lot of truck traffic towards those residential properties.
Yeah, and and obviously, any any anything you can do with your your routes for the trucks, reminding them it would be preferential, obviously, for them to come in off of ninety three up there and come down, because that's the shortest, quickest in and out. You know, not coming up
Absolutely.
Shaoxing, so.
The only note I wanted to add, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that depending on the use that moves into this space, it could be a use that requires further special permitting. And if it's something that's considered that there, they may need or require or want overnight deliveries, and that's something we can discuss at that stage. And I trust that, um, you know, National Development and Holton Bugby will keep us uh, apprised of any potential tenants, so that maybe we can work through some of those details early on, so we don't have the complaint that we do receive at Market Basket.
And I think whatever, I don't know what exactly
Sure.
you know, the board will think to do, but I would think in general, you know, not having extensive overnight would be something we would try to figure out a way to implement. So keep that in mind in your marketing.
Absolutely.
So, alright, so, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything further?
Um, no, that was, that was my main concern, just, so I'm off.
Alright, just a little.
Yeah, I guess this is traffic related, but so just on the the expansion or the reserved space lots, do y'all anticipate this requiring less employees than a regular warehouse? Is it gonna be one of these highly automated things, and you're just waiting to see?
It's 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 more of a the the speculative nature of it, so what we've seen in in our other warehouse assets is that typically that one per thousand utilization doesn't actually occur in in from a peak utilization standpoint, and so just given that we don't have that tenant in place now to actually know what the demand is, we're more so looking at the ITE standard data in terms of utilization rates, which points us to much less than that that one per thousand. So the request is is to reserve it. We'll obviously have to come to to Alex's point, we'll have to come in and and submit a, you know, permit for the buildout of the space to confirm the use, to confirm the space plan, and the amount of offices that will be within the building. And at that point, if it's something that we predict is gonna warrant additional parking spaces, we have the area planned to construct it at that time.
Okay.
And when you um, when you did the traffic study, did you run it assuming all of the spaces?
In terms of of trip generation?
Yeah.
We, it was, it's based mostly on, having to speak to it, uh, off the size of the structure.
Yeah, it's, it's based on the square footage of the facility, including the additional office space.
No further questions.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I also, I guess, you know, especially, uh, you know, we've done a couple of approvals on some buildings that were still, you know, shopping for a tenant. And uh, you know, I know that there is a kind of a little bit of a demand for e-commerce type space. And uh, you know, that, um, I mean, Holton Bugby has always been a great neighbor here in Tewksbury for the thirty seven years that I've been here anyways, and uh, um, so I don't expect that there's, I I expect that there would be concern about that, but you know, ob- obviously overnight noisy type operations uh, could could be a problem.
Sure.
Um, I don't have any problem at all with the uh, with the height waiver. Um, I see you're not looking for a bicycle rack waiver, I think that's a good thing.
That'll be incorporated, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattali?
Yeah, I have no little comments, except I know it's a spec building, so peak hours of traffic are 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 up in the air, so uh, with that, I mean, uh, I'll let it go for now, and we'll be, you'll be back for future engineering concerns and comments, so we'll see you back then.
Yeah, I don't know, beyond what we've already discussed, I don't have anything extra for that for now. Obviously, you have things to deal with with, you know, engineering and whatnot before, um, before you come back to us. You know, obviously, with with the the multiple sort of cuts, you know, it isn't, you know, that's one of the reasons why I asked about the, you know, the delivery driveway, to make sure, you know, yes, they're gonna go in and out, but then I know now they're not coming out of the others. And vice versa for the passenger cars, um, you know, so it makes it a little less congested potentially. So that's, that's ideal, and I think it is, you know, in your best interest to push the, you know, the the delivery, you know, the big trucks as far away from the residential as possible, um, further away than they currently would be in the driveway as they, as you use it now. Um, I think that's a, that's a benefit. But like I said, most of the rest of it, you know, it's Ts and Is, you gotta deal with engineering on, so. What I'll do is I'll open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns. I'll have you come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and the floor is yours.
Uh, my name is David Norman, I'm in thirty five Kingston Road in Tewksbury, and I have two questions regarding the traffic. So you mentioned, I'm sorry, yeah, you mentioned that it would be approximately a two second delay. How many cars or how many vehicles does that translate to? How much more actual traffic, regardless of how much time you estimated? What is your estimate for the number of vehicles that would be traveling there?
If you just switch places, you have.
Sure.
So we use the uh, land use code one fifty for warehousing, so when we look at traffic, we look at the peak hours, right? We wanna find the worst time of traffic, so we, it's the, it's the highest volume of traffic on the roadway, and then we add what the site's gonna generate. So during the weekday AM peak hour, it is, um, I'm sorry, I just wanted to look at my notes here, uh, forty six total trips. Uh, so that's entering and exiting the site during the AM peak hour, and during the PM peak hour, forty nine trips. So just less than one trip a minute, roughly.
And one more follow up question, how many accidents have occurred at the corner of Shaoxing Street and East Street, Daskum Road, did you find?
I do have that information, just give me a moment. And we found, we had to look at, uh, we looked at the data from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, and East Street, Daskum Road, and Shaoxing had six total crashes, so it's about one point two per year, and has a crash rate under the um, average uh, district and district and statewide average.
Thank you very much.
I'll note too that I appreciate that you're using numbers that are more legitimate in that COVID would have wiped out the two thousand twenty, twenty one numbers. Um, so just for anybody, you know, who's thinking about the traffic, that's why that's important, that they were using fifteen to nineteen and skipping the ones where everybody was stuck at home. So, alright, anyone else with any questions? I saw, yeah, if you come on up.
Uh, hi, uh, Virgilio Bankerata, uh, fifteen hundred Shaoxing Street, where the building kind of encapsulated in the project there, so, yes. Just two things, one is a a small concern as far as vegetation in view for when we exit our property. Kind of curious to see what that line of sight's gonna look like. Um, we've been neighbors with Holton Bugby for twenty years, and they've done a pretty good job of cutting down that vegetation when it starts to get overgrown, because it does block, you know, line of sight of anybody trying to leave the building, uh, and and turn left onto Shaoxing Street. So curious to see what that view would look like. Um, and then just wanted to make the board aware, uh, we are working with National Development right now to work through three existing easements that we have on the property right now, that total about an acre and a half of land. So it's um, talks we've been having, we just uh, last week retained counsel, so they've just started scratching the surface as far as doing their due diligence to see what there is and kind of digesting it for us so that we understand.
And just so we're sticking to the same, are we talking about the property that we're actually talking about right now, or are we actually talking about the one we're gonna talk about in a minute?
There is a one easement that
Said both.
lightly crossover, the majority of them are within the
Alright, just 'cause I wanna try and keep
Sure.
when we have questions or comments, if you want to line up the other, did we just keep them to that? That way on the record, they stick with the property?
So the easements
It doesn't
The easements affect both.
Okay.
So I'll be back up here in five minutes, just to
Good enough, that works. Alright, any other questions or comments?
No.
Alright, very good.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Anyone else, questions, comments, or concerns?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the uh, for the record, my name is Mark Wallace, I live at uh, ten Brianna Lee Circle, Tewksbury, Mass. That's the uh, the property I own is at the corner of Vale Street and the first home on Brianna Lee Circle, and I've been there for twenty four years. Um, also for full transparency, I'm also an environmental consultant for Tech Environmental, and we do a lot of work with warehouse projects, so I'm pretty familiar with the, with these types of projects. Um, overall, I've looked at the site plans, and generally, I'm not against or in favor of the project. I think there are a lot of good things that have been done with the design of the project. Um, but I do have some questions um, for the board and for the applicant. Is it, it's a spec building at this point, so I'm wondering at this, at this juncture, is there gonna be any refrigeration trucks, that type of thing? Because they do tend to idle and can make quite a bit of noise, um, from, you know, from idling trucks. So if if that were to be the case, I would wanna make sure that there was a way to minimize the idling of those types of uh, vehicles. The other thing was, the um, would there be any potential sound study to be done for this particular project in compliance with the town's, you know, Noise by Law Chapter, uh, I think it's eight point twelve, as well as a mass DAB noise policy. When I work on different types of projects like this, we always uh, do a sound study to assess the potential impacts for neighbors. Not only from stationary sources like rooftop equipment, but also from trucking activities as well. I tried to get a copy of the the traffic study, it wasn't available online, so if that's available at some point, obviously I'd like to be able to take a look at that.
Contact the office.
Yeah, absolutely. And would there be a peer review of the traffic study um, at some point down the road, so that it would be uh, properly evaluated? And the only other thing I have as far as a question is the potential cumulative impacts of the two lots, the one they're gonna be talking about in a few minutes, of Holton Bugby operations as well as with the warehouse. Lastly, I have some proposed permit conditions for the board consideration. These are sort of like good neighbor practices that I've seen on other warehouse projects. If you'd like, instead of to save time, I can send those to you in writing.
Yeah, that's fine, because we're we're not proving anything to them, so.
Yeah, right, so I can send those
Give them to the members?
I can send those to the members and, okay.
Very good. Um, I'd like, as the 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 comment stated, since it's spec, I don't know if you really have any answer to the refrigeration question, obviously.
Not at this point.
Um, obviously something we can address should become an issue in the future.
And obviously we'll respect all all applicable idling laws that are in place.
I don't recall ever doing a sound study, have we ever done a sound study?
There have been sound studies for certain projects, the only one I am aware of is quite old, um, from nineteen ninety eight, when the Jenny's Way subdivision was built, because it abuts Route ninety three. I'm not aware of any in the last five years. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but I'm just, I'm not aware of any at this time.
Alright, um, we'll take that one under advisement, only, you know, I'd like to hear a little bit more, if there's anybody in any of the departments that feels that that's something we should be concerned about here, um, and then we can make a decision going forward. Um, as far as peer review of the traffic, the board will make a decision on whether or not we're gonna have it peer reviewed.
Sure.
And then, you know, we'll probably make that decision tonight.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Did I cover everything?
Yeah.
I think I did, okay.
Great comment, sir.
Thank you.
Michael, we're noting we have, what, five traffic studies, all in pretty much covering that same area?
Yeah, so
And they're all pretty much saying the same thing, so
Which is what I was gonna bring up after, yeah, so.
One note on the traffic study peer review front is the engineering division hasn't had a chance to finish their review on this project with the traffic study encompassing both projects. So once we get their recommendations, that may be able to guide the board
Right.
on whether they think a peer review is warranted.
Okay, plus, obviously, they've also reviewed exactly, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, the multiple projects in that exact same, pretty much, area to to feed off of as well, so they'll make that decision and give us their recommendation. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Once, twice, bring it back to the board. Uh, the board, do you have any other questions at this time?
Nothing for me at this time.
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Alright, so with that, do we have a, we have seven?
What, motion to continue, seven fifteen on six twenty six?
Seven fifteen, yep, motion to continue to seven fifteen on uh, six twenty six has been made, do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item G, which is also sixteen Shaoxing Street, site plan review, special permit, land disturbance permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
Some.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Tell me if you'd state your names again for the record, and the floor will be yours.
Billy Collins, Holton Bugby Company.
Daniel Moore with National Development.
Matthew Costa with Beals Associates.
Alright, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
So as a continuation, this is a presentation on the neighboring parcel, which we referred to as lot two. Uh, this is a consolidation and a modernization of the H and B facility, um, in a reduced footprint. Uh, so we refer to to lot two as the dumbo lot. On the back end of the lot, uh, on the, on the plane, to my right, is the the reduced square footage of the uh, the H and B mill facility. And on the front portion closer to Shaoxing Street is a secondary structure that will be used for storage of H and B's lump, uh, processed lumber. And so, uh, again, we went through the A and R process, or received enforcement on the A and R uh, plan on April twenty fourth. So this is reflective of the plane you see in front of you. In terms of uh, the meeting tonight, we're here for a slight, similar but slightly different special permits, site plan review, um, special permit on allowable use, which on this one is actually manufacturing rather than the warehouse use, given uh, the mill facilities activities. And we are also um, looking for that same uh, special permit for the decrease in in parking spaces by thirty percent uh, for the for the H and B team. And then two waiver requests, one is uh, for um, a waiver to allow the parking spaces that are more than five hundred feet from the facility to count towards the parking count for the site, uh, just given the unique uh, conditions of the site, um, as well as a a waiver to maintain an existing curb cut as the primary entrance within fifty feet of the Vale Street intersection, um, which again is an existing condition in terms of its location, trying to incorporate that as their entry point.
Okay.
Similar to the previous projects, uh, providing zoning analysis, showing that um, on this one, all of the dimensional requirements are met, and we are not asking for any sort of height waiver. Uh, there is a mezzanine structure planned for the uh, for the H and B mill facility, but again, within the allowable height, that that mezzanine structure will just be within the the overall structure. Terms of orientation of the site, as I mentioned, using the existing curb cut, uh, along Shaw Street, adjacent to Vale Street is the main entrance. Um, that primary storage facility will not be an occupied, uh, primarily occupied structure, uh, but we'll have some level of parking count, about thirty seven spaces surrounding it. As you go through the the private drive going back to the mill facility, um, you'll have your main parking area just planned north, which is a sixty space uh, parking space, some some overflow parking uh, towards the the rear of the site, uh, with eleven additional spaces, and then what we consider to be kind of the uh, the programmatic or the loading use for the facility to be on that more open hardscape area. What you see um, in yellow is a, you know, high tension uh, power line pole, which is why it's it's not really incorporated into the overall plan. Then again, some uh, additional parking um, that is shown adjacent to that pole. That pole also kind of acts as a uh, a circulation point, right? So as as trucks are turning from this area to the site, if anyone's using uh, loading for their um, their sawdust collection tank, they can circulate around and come back out, as well as emergency vehicles can kind of use that as a guidepost for circulation and making that turn, uh, which we validated through a series of truck turns on the site. And the only other thing to note, uh, in orientation, so these are pre-engineered um, Butler-type buildings, so um, a little bit more industrial in appearance. The main entrance will be here along this sixty space entrance, um, with uh, their kind of front door, as well as, that's the the general proximity of the uh, the mezzanine space uh, that they do have planned for the structure. And then the last thing to point out is the reserve parking area, showing gray, that is technically on the lot one parcel, so we will work through an easement for lot two uh, in the event that that waiver is granted for the for the additional part.
Okay.
So visual perspective, uh, for those familiar with the H and B facility, a a very similar continuation of the existing architecture that's on the site, newer structure, you know, a pre-engineered metal structure for the most part, and overhead doors on either side of the structure, kind of And overhead doors on either side of the structure, kind of giving them flexibility from a programming standpoint within their manufacturing use, and then door, obviously, for their main entrance adjacent to it. Yeah, so that's, that's basically the overview. Again, we have sheets available to, to do an overview of the underground utility and stormwater work. Should, should there be any questions?
Go back the, the other way around, because that one was for Tyler.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So most of the parking is for employees, correct? Because you don't have many people coming in and buying stuff, I believe, so.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's not any retail activity, it's manufacturing. The front building is predominantly storage, and the manufacturing will all be occurring in the back building, further from the neighborhood, et cetera.
I mean, as far as the parking goes, and what you need, I mean, I don't have a problem voting for the parking that you need, considering that the public isn't coming in for the most part. It's mostly employees coming in and trucks coming in, picking up and, and going out, I believe, you know, so.
The maximum current parking that I've seen in there, I've been following it now for about six months randomly, has been sixty-six cars.
Yeah.
And I think we're applying for a hundred and twenty-eight.
Parking spots.
Yeah.
Have you ever considered solar panels for the facilities? I mean, this facility and for the proposed speculative one coming up, I mean, there's such gigantic buildings and big roof areas, you'd think you'd be able to use some of that, but.
That is, it's a great point. Many of our facilities do assume PD load for those panels in, in the structure to allow the flexibility, whether ourselves elect to do it and partner with the, the local, you know, utility providers or the tenant for their own needs, would elect to do it.
I mean, I've done some research in the past, simply because we have a lot of, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of metal roof now.
Sure.
So a lot of people approach you. A couple of concerns I've had with it in the past, and it's been backed up recently by our steel building manufacturer and our HVAC person, is it's not a real healthy alternative to be putting holes in metal roofs.
Right.
That, and now, three times, I think, in the last twenty years, we've had to get snow blowers up there. We've had that, we had that winter in two thousand and fifteen, there was one around nine or ten, and one back in the early nineties, that we had, you know, there were steel buildings collapsing around, and just a snow load. We had a congo line, including myself and Raj back there, blowing snow off the roof.
Yeah.
So I worry about load and the ability to, 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 to access that capability.
Yeah. I mean, but thinking, if you're building a new roof structure to the facility, if you build this wrong enough, that roof loader's going to be able to carry, but.
For sure.
Something to think of down the road, so.
I'm not opposed to it philosophically, I'd, it'd be great to have it. We use a lot of electricity.
Absolutely, you know, and a lot of, it's there, so you have the space for it. I mean, in the way I think it is now for solar, they're pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, so. Just a, you know, concern and consideration for you while you're doing all this planning.
Absolutely.
But then, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to kind of ask on, on Mr. Fattalia's point there. I know that the building code has changed considerably since way back when, when everybody had snow blowers on their roofs. You know, I mean, it's something in the neighborhood of sixty-five pounds a square foot or something, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I don't know that that all by itself would be a deterrent. Poking holes in the roof, I guess, is probably a, a good way and a bad way to, 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 to take care of those attachment points. It's just, it's just something that we, that we're asking, you know what I mean? Nobody, nobody's going to make you put solar panels on your roof. But no, I think it's, I think it's a, a pretty well thought-out project, and I, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lozali.
Yeah, I noticed you had some EV spots in the other proposal. Any plans to put a couple in this proposal as well?
Not currently contemplated. That's something we can certainly consider.
Cool. Yeah, outside of that, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you switch to the parking graph again, real quick?
Sure.
The, I understand, because you're asking for a waiver regarding parking greater than a distance of five hundred feet.
Correct.
And so, the number of required spaces is fifty-three?
This is assuming, this, this graph is assuming that we, we received that waiver. This is the total, this is reflected, the total amount of spaces that are reflected on the site plan.
Okay, so you'd be losing the eleven spaces.
We'd be losing the thirty-seven spaces with, these thirty-seven spaces here. Primary facility and entry point is over on the backside of the site.
Okay, understood. So the alternative would be to add more parking over at the other site?
Which from a, you know, what we, we tried to make a point to do is, is avoid showing any circulation over strapping faces from a, either emergency or just general truck traffic perspective. And so it somewhat limits us, given circulation as it exists in this plan, to add additional spaces in this location or in this location. So almost ran out of spaces from a, from a striping perspective to do so cleanly.
So, and I guess I'll, I'll ask Ms. Lauter to weigh in a little bit. So the only solution beyond what you show here really would be to shrink the building?
Alternatively, could we?
Okay. I just, I always like to be clear when, when we're doing waivers, just what the alternatives are. And some people ask for waivers just because they think that waivers are pro forma.
It's a fair point.
So we just like to look into them a little bit, but I.
And again, just to, to highlight Billy's point, you know, from a historical perspective, in terms of data that, that they've seen on the site, even with, even with the waiver, we would be providing additional spaces to what they traditionally would use. And so we anticipate far less frequency of utilization for the parking spaces that are, that are going at the front of the site.
Okay. Is there sidewalk ac, sidewalk access or other pedestrian safe access to get from one side to the other?
Not currently, and Billy, I don't know if you want to touch on operationally why that's the case.
We're trying to keep that road as wide as we can, because it's basically, other than employees entering in the morning, it's for material distribution from that storage facility, which we store in raw material for the mill finishing it. You're dealing with packages of lumber that are eight to sixteen feet long, that are on a forklift width-wise. I think, without a doubt, from a safety standpoint, putting, putting sidewalks on that street, that's not really going to have any pedestrian traffic, only increases the crowding of that traffic when it is two-way at certain times.
Okay. I'm just, I'm extending the thought of, you can't fit thirty-seven parking spaces within five hundred feet of the main entrance, so you've moved them to another part of the site, but you haven't provided a way for a person that parks there to actually safely get without walking down a road, which you just said is actually quite busy with trucks and heavy materials.
If we had people, when they'd work in that building, one, they're probably forklift drivers, so they're driving a vehicle there. If it was something where we were going to utilize that area for parking for the employees, you'd probably have the forklift drivers park there and, and put their lifts in that building overnight. And people that might normally be working in the mill that would get on there to do something, just from a time standpoint, you'd probably bring them down to golf cart.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, no further comments at this time.
All right, so, you know, I don't, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me that you don't, you know, you don't want to put the spaces in there. However, I could see, you know, whether you've striped three or four of them, just so that there was a place in the event that you wanted to have people go straight there to start work, then they don't have to park down the other, and then you got extra people coming back and up in golf carts or whatever it is. I'm envisioning, again, my reference to winter, and golf carting it up from the other building in January, not fun. So those folks might want to maybe park, if you, you know, you striped three or four up here, then they'd have a place to put their cars safely, start their work in, you know, the, the front building, and then go about whatever they're doing, just, just so that there's a couple of, you know, a couple of spaces, maybe, just.
I don't see how striping some spaces down there would be any problem at all.
So, and you may never use them.
Right.
I, I don't know. It's just, you know, maybe those couple, just a couple.
They would be being used.
Right, so, I think that might, you know, at least address a little bit. I mean, obviously, you're not going to put them all in. It doesn't make sense. You're not going to have thirty-seven people up there. You're just not, so. You know, that might just, just for logistics help, just a few. Other than that, you know, the, the comments on, you know, what's going on traffic-wise is no different than the, the previous ones, so I don't really have anything to add, in terms of comments on, you know, the ins and outs. You know, the other buildings existing and does something else, you know, in between there, so. All right, so with that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one?
I'm Vigilio Bankerana, fifteen hundred Shawshin Street, in the building in the middle of the project. Similar cons, uh, concerns like before. Curious what the landscaping is going to look like as far as when we exit our driveway, visibility down Shawshin Street, to be able to see any oncoming traffic when we come out and turn left. You know, there, again, there are three easements right now that we're working through, that we're still doing our due diligence on as far as gathering information, that right now touch upon both projects. And then, still digesting our feelings as far as that, the building between ours and Shawshin Street, kind of the obstruction of the view of our building. We do have some assembly use tenants, and that's really our only visibility to the street, but still figuring that one out. Just wanted to make a point, put it on record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
For the record, Mark Wallace, Tanbriano Lee Circle. I just had a couple of comments or questions. Would the new facility be at twenty-four hours operations?
We currently in our manufacturing operations are not running twenty-four hours. We don't anticipate asking to change that. We have, in the past, had, had some second shifts before. The, the gates would be open at night, so that if any, a lot of our trucks come from a, a, a distance away, including our own kiln drying facility in Pittsburgh, that'll be doing the drying that we do here now, that get in, in the night, so they would be coming in with directional signage to go to the rear of the property. And they probably park down there with those high tension wires. We've had pretty good success with that now for the last couple of years, getting trucks to go down there and stay away from that area, which now houses our two stack of buildings. There's two buil, two buildings and a house kind of where that building is now the storage, so. As far as. I guess one other thing, the, the, the one operation we do, do that's twenty-four, seven, will be disappearing, because we're not going to kill dry lumber here anymore. We don't, we don't get enough supply out of New England. And so that includes the fans that run twenty-four hours a day, that occasionally have belts slipping or whatever. It includes the boiler that runs twenty-four hours a day and occasionally has maybe smoking issues. You might hear the material handling from the silo to the boiler on a summer night. All that will be gone.
All right.
Appreciate that. Any chance of replacing the backup alarms on some of your forklifts and stuff with white noise backup alarms?
Certainly look at it. I mean, you know, we have, they all have, we, we, we duplicate now the backups with, with lights. And they're, again, it's going to be predominantly daytime material handling there, but, but that could include when it's dark in the morning.
Yeah, just, you know, just, I know in the summer months, I can hear the backup alarms on the, some of the forklifts and stuff like that, but.
Sure.
You know, I was curi, I'm curious as far as, I mean, I know you really can't do much. Right. It's not much you can do on some of the other kinds of trucking, but it, you know, when you're onsite facility operations, you know, white noise backup alarms can be used, that'd be much appreciated.
Trash pickups would be during the day.
Right, yeah, understood. And then, reading through the application, looks like there's going to be some improvements on noise suppression and air pollution control equipment on the, on the mill building. I'd be interested in hearing more about that at some point. Hopefully, I'll, I'll put those again in questions to the board for your consideration.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions, comments, or concerns? Going once, twice, all right, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the bullet?
Chairman, I have one question from Mr. Collins. So what are the hours of operations now?
The standard punch-in is, you know, seven-thirty to four-thirty, but there, there's, there's operating going on from six to six, between the, the finished loading of trucks in the afternoon and people coming in to get material moved and machines set up, so that when guys are on machines.
Sure, okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right, so with that, we have seven-twenty on the twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Making a motion to continue?
All right, so a motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
See that? Great, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, we'll see you next time.
We need some more paper next time you come, all right?
No, we can generate, see, Paul, just.
Great question. Is he here?
Yeah.
Well, can we just, just do it at the end?
Okay, just wanted to let you know.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item H, which is eight, uh, eight ninety East Street. Site plan review, motion to waive the public reading?
Some move.
Motion made, or second? Motion made in second, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Gentlemen, once you get settled, if you state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Nichols. I'm a Tuxbury resident. I live at one hundred Florence Ave. We are proposing a retail marijuana site for eight ninety East Street. We looked at several sites along East Street and Shawshin Street, and I've lived in this town forty-two. I've lived in this town all my life. Shawshin Street was a non-starter. The site has great parking, and it's right off of East Street on a straightaway, and it's more or less in turnkey shape at this point. It just needs a configuration side for, for retail. I'll, just to, that brief introduction, I'll hand it over to Mario, who I propose operating partner for Canavah.
Good evening. My name is Mario Chicarella, President and CEO of Canavah. Canavah is an operational dispensary in Rockland, Massachusetts. We started, we started operations in July of twenty-twenty. It's been a great ru, run, and look forward to expanding as an operational partner in, in Tuxbury. North Shore, born and raised, so I'd love to be around the area where I'm from. You know, we want to keep it short, so I'm going to pass it off to Jim.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, Jim Hanley with Civil Design Consultants. So I'm just going to kind of walk you through existing and proposed conditions. The proposed site improvements are really minor, but we'll just kind of walk through those and warm you up to existing conditions. Again, we're at eight ninety East Street, which is off of Lumber Lane, East Street, Industrial Avenue. The site's approximately four and a half acres in size. We have a lot of fun. We've got about five hundred feet on Industrial, two fifty on East, and somewhere about three hundred here on Lumber Lane. I'm sure you're all familiar with the building. That building footprint's about fifty thousand square feet in area. In the actual building area, inside of that footprint's about fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred square feet. That's because a portion of it has, has lofted areas and second floor. So, what we tried to do was kind of isolate the portion of the site that we are proposing improvements on, and also kind of call out the area of the building. So you can see that the area of the building, that it'll be converted from some form of office to some form of retail marijuana slash support areas for staff and storage, is about five hundred, uh, five thousand, two hundred and forty-five square feet. It's located on the wing of the building that's at the intersection of lumber, and then this is East Street down here. You can see on the layout plan, it actually, it actually is configured pretty well existing. There's an existing parking lot with about twenty-four spaces, which is literally at the front door of the proposed use. Our goal for this was to look at what was on site, how we could make this better, and how we could allow a retail use in the site regardless of what it was. So what we did is, we looked at the parking count, the office space that we'll be removing in lieu of the retail space. We did provide that. We did provide that in the application. I know Alex had some questions with that, and we'll go back and forth with her to make sure that we address her questions. But essentially, we have a net addition of plus or minus four spaces, I think is what it is. So it's four extra spaces based on our calculations here. The proposal literally includes very minor adjustments to the pavement of approximately 2,400 square feet. So you can see that's this hashed area here. The only reason we're doing that is because we want to provide ADA compliant access to and from the ADA spaces. So these are actually existing ADA spaces, but there's been a little bit of wear and tear on the site, pavement heaving, concrete sidewalks that upheave just a little bit. So what we're proposing to do is saw cut a small 2,500 square foot portion, including the spaces, make sure that we don't have anything in excess of 2%. And then, we're proposing to remove and replace somewhere approximately 120 square yards of additional, of existing sidewalks, and that will get us access to the front door, which is through the lobby area here, which eventually gets you into that building. So the goal here was provide the adequate parking and make sure we have ADA covered. We have no increase in impervious surface. I think we've actually got like a 300 square foot decrease. We have no changes to drainage patterns. Where we are right now is we filed the application, we got a DPW review letter, maybe two weeks ago, give or take. The only comment that they had was that they felt that this site was a good candidate with a fee in lieu for the sidewalk. So we're going through that. We've asked them to provide that square footage, and then the associated unit price, which we'll consider, and we don't have any exception with that. We also got a review letter from Alex, and I think there's a couple of details we need to work through, but I don't think we have any exception with that either. In my application, it stated that a traffic study was included. We're actually in the process of preparing the traffic study, right? So they finished the counts last week. We have a trip generation memo, but I don't think it really does too much. It doesn't really provide enough context. We've actually performed a full traffic study, and that'll be hopefully in by the end of the week here. So, in conclusion, existing site, very minor exterior improvements. We take no exceptions with DPW or the planning board's letter and comments, and we're here for site plan and review. We're not looking for any special permits or any waivers. So with that being said, unless you guys have anything in addition to add. We'll start with Mr. Patai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great, there's not much need for improvement to the site for the most part. I mean, you're taking away your offices and putting in retail. So you mentioned, Mr. Hanley, about some loft space above you. Is that being occupied by somebody else now?
So I don't know if the loft is above this space, or...
So for this part of the building, there is a second floor, and it is occupied by a medical device company. It's a fairly small company, but yes, they are there on the second floor.
So let me ask you, we have not had that come in front of us as far as somebody above the facility? Any possibility of access from the above rental space to the marijuana facility from the above? I mean, I don't know if that's...
Would you like to speak to security a little bit more?
Well, I believe there's a steel floor above, so it'd be pretty difficult. For our vaults especially, every, a product has to go in the vault every night, whether it be fully concrete or cement boards sandwiched with a fireproof wire. Everything, like I said, goes in the vault.
So the vault's going to handle all the merchandise at the end of the night anyway, so access into that is a moot point?
Yes, yes, and that's why in Rockland, we have, it's, everything goes in the vault. They're all concrete. You know, nothing is on the sales floor.
Right, okay, I recall that, so, yeah, that's fine. So, Mr. Hanley, you mentioned about fee in lieu of for the sidewalks. So I know we had discussed on another sites very similar to that location, that instead of doing a fee in lieu of, that we do sidewalks for the residents on E Street, rather than just putting, taking, taking that fee in lieu of, that we increase the access for rent, for residents on E Street. You know, it doesn't make sense to put sidewalks at that location, I don't believe, because I don't see many people walking on that particular location due to the proximity of the traffic and so forth, but, so, I mean, I would be in favor of discussing that possibly in the future, you know, that we do sidewalks that aren't there personally for the residents that live in the area, so.
I think this is the first application we've had since the fee in lieu was an option where the DPW recommended the fee. So, and I think that's because on the other side of E Street, we have a project that'll be coming in that is going to have sidewalks, it's going to be the connector. The other side of the road is a little challenging with lumber and industrial, and the railroad tracks.
Right, so, I'll ask that one, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, so Bicycle Rack, I know we've, Mr. Hanley, obviously you've heard us talk about Bicycle Rack for all of the other sites. Are you looking for a waiver on that, or will you be putting one in?
We could put in two.
Okay, that was easy. And then, I don't know if this is kind of a housekeeping issue or not, but you introduce yourself as the CEO of...
Cannavah.
Cannavah, and all of our paperwork and the plans and everything say Bella Luna.
Correct.
So what's the relationship between...
We're an operating partner, management contracts.
Management, okay, understood. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, no, it definitely, it's a convoluted front there as far as sidewalks go, so, I mean, that's definitely the right thing to do in that instance, I believe. I was, the building itself is, looks like it needs a little TLC on the exterior there. You know, I saw a couple of chunks of concrete laying around in the parking lot, and I didn't notice if there was any parking lot lighting there, was there? Not sure if there was.
It definitely would have, so at one point in time, that suite was tri-wire, and so it, it has to have lighting. I don't have an answer for you right this moment.
Maybe that's something we can check on?
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great. You know, and I did notice too that the two handicap spaces that are there, they couldn't be further from the front door. I was just wondering if they, you know, might be relocated to be a little bit more convenient for an actual handicapped person trying to get in and out of the building, you know?
Yeah, so that's fair enough, there, that's where the existing spaces are, and it also keeps the user from having to directly cross two lanes of traffic where they can ghetto here, and then this is where our curb cut would be for the ramp, so if that's something that you'd like to see, we could do that.
Well, no, no, I, no, I guess I would want to make it as accommodating as possible is what I would like to, what I would like to see there. That would be my interest. So basically, the main access is going to be down Lumber Lane and into the parking lot. And I know that it's identified, I saw a couple of different square footage numbers. One was for, the narrative was 2,500 or so square feet, and then there was another square foot number, I saw 5,200. I think that was from the traffic engineer maybe, or?
So it's, the retail use is 5,245 square feet. So if we put 25, maybe somebody flipped the number wrong for on, but it's 5,200.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
All right, and that section is what they would call 4B? Is that identified in some of the paperwork of part of the building? Area 4B, or suite 4B, or something along those lines?
Yes, yep. So we had some leasing documents that were provided by the property manager for the property that broke down the individual units and the sizes of those units, and that, we just kept it consistent with what they have, so it's suite or unit four, or a portion thereof.
Okay, because I saw 4B somewhere too.
Yeah, so this would be, this basically is four, and what we're calling it, do, is just limited to this piece here, so we just call it 4B.
I see, okay. Okay, very good, Mr. Hanley. That's really all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zai?
Yeah, I just have some questions around the, around the parking here. I think, so, it says 26 required. If my count is right, you have 32 out in the front here, but are these shared among other tenants in the building?
So the other tenants in the building are mostly warehouse space. There is the one office above our location, but a lot of the other units are also taken, so there's plenty of parking right now, just because most buildings are not used.
One of the challenges in presenting that was, the way that we approached it was, let's look at the entire building, let's look at the uses of the building and the apartments available on site, just to make sure that we're not going to put a use in that then makes it non-compliant. And our finding were that we have four extra spaces, five extra spaces than what's required.
Yeah, I think on one of the other previous dispensaries in a large lot, we've asked them to specifically kind of outline the spaces that, you know, would be used by that business. Because, yeah, I'm looking at like where the other spaces are on this plan, and it doesn't look like there would be great access from either the one over on the left or the one down from the south towards this dispensary.
But I would keep in mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this access here to the main building provides access to unit four?
It does.
And then the area of the block, so if you were working, you know, down here, you would want to park up there.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask one more quick question, please? Thank you. Mr. Hanley, does that common area where the entrance is, does that go right through to the other side of the building, the East Street side of the building, I wonder?
No, it does not.
It doesn't, so those are kind of like two separate common areas? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zai?
Yeah, definitely interested in the traffic study as well, but it sounds like that's in progress. I think the other thing, landscaping, I saw a comment in there that right now it looks like it's lomen seed only, but I see some trees kind of on the, on the plan here. Are those new planting, or are those...
No, those were existing.
Existing trees?
Yeah, so what we, what we proposed here initially is that we replace whatever is disturbed, and really, the only, the only thing we're disturbing is to provide ADA access, because we're not generating any additional area of concrete, so it won't be disturbing any of those trees, so we just basically clean up the sidewalks and maybe see the fringes on the side of it. That was the intent.
Okay, cool. And, yeah, I think just one more, I know some of the other dispensaries, you've seen like a secured loading area flagged off in here, do you have that depicted on these?
We don't, and we can add it.
Okay. All right, no further questions.
Very good. Other than traffic, that's, you know, tends to be the biggest one for all of these, so without that, you know, I really don't have anything else beyond what's already been asked or the things you still need to give answers for. So I'll wait on traffic and have a conversation once we see what the results of that are. Obviously, East Street, you know, it's important, you know, what this will do and how the flow will work, so. With that, I'll open it up. Anyone in the audience with questions, comments, or concerns, come on up, state your name and your address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Good evening again, David Norman, 35 Kigson Road. Just had a couple of questions. What's the hour of operations you're planning on?
I don't have that information in front of me right now, but it is set by the town by law.
Yeah, I, it's 11.
I believe it's 10 to 8.
10 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Okay, there you go.
10 a.m. to 8 p.m. And is that, just as a point of fact, is that standard for...
That is the maximum allowed for any retail dispensary in the town, and that was set by the select board.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had is, I'm trying to picture the location, but is there direct access from Lumber Road to Carter Street?
No.
Carter Street is the side street, is that...
Oh, is it, this is it right here? I think that, yes, right, so it's at the intersection, so it's at that triangular intersection.
Correct.
Hard right is Carter, but, but once you're past that intersection, there's no other access onto Carter.
Right, so is it, can people, is it possible for people to leave your parking lot and then go directly up Carter Street and into that residential area? If they wanted to avoid going out onto each street, they could go up Carter Street and then take a right on Less Than Street and then go out that way?
Absolutely.
Okay, so there's a potential for that additional traffic in that area? Those are all the questions I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, questions, comments, or concerns? Twice, bring it back to the board.
Chairman, one more question if I could. Signage, are you proposing some signage, come down the road?
We will be proposing signage. We would be back here to, you know, discuss the specifics of that. The building does have a small sign.
I've seen that sign, I just, I figured you were on top of that.
Yes.
All right, with that, we have 7:25 on the 26th. Do I have a motion to continue to 7:25? Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'll see you next time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item I, which is 2186 and 2196 Main Street, site plan review. Have a motion to waive the public reading?
No.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Once everyone's settled, if you state your names to the record, the floor will be yours. So you guys are all set, just state your names to the record, the floor is yours.
Dean Graffio, 52 Pentacle Street, President.
Rebecca Adams, 1620 Partners.
Rick Morse, Architecture EL.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Like I said, Dean Graffio, 52 Pentacle Street, currently did this owner of some of these lickers for five and a half years, since 2018. I'm the President of Carbonair LLC, and we like to give you a site review process. On our team, we have Rob DiFazio, CEO of CNA Stores. He has retail locations in April and Amesbury. He's our operating partner. Rebecca Adams is next to me, she's our cannabis consultant. And we have Rick Morse, our project architect, and James Command is our cannabis attorney. I'm going to turn the mic over, and I'll pose you.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for your time. I am known to be very verbose, so I promise you I will try and keep it wrapped up as much as possible and as quickly as possible. Again, my name is Rebecca Adams, and I am a cannabis consultant for Carbonair. I'm here this evening with Richard Morse, the project architect from Architecture EL, and we are proposing construction of a new retail building, which will be approximately 3,200 square feet. The building will be a single-story adult-use cannabis dispensary to be located on 1.28 acres, located at 2186 and 2196 Main Street. Carbonair is properly zoned and does meet the site plan criteria. We are currently negotiating and have proposed a lease agreement. We have a binding option to a multi-decade lease, and if you're curious about our commitment to the project, we are designing and planning a multimillion-dollar project at this site, so we are committed as a company. I am sure you've seen in our narrative and through all of the drawings that we've proposed, the project really represents a thoughtful, sensible, and sensitive approach to the location. We will be revitalizing and transforming two vacant lots. One of the key design features that we are proposing is a vernacular form in the shape of like a common barn. We did provide some pictures for you, I know you've already seen them. It is aesthetically pleasing and highly functional, so it will provide ample interior space while maintaining a very low profile. while maintaining a very low profile for the neighborhood in a semi-rural area. We're required to provide seventeen parking spaces, we are proposing twenty-six. We have included a bike rack with two bicycles, uh, use for bicycles at the site. And we did submit a traffic memorandum, and we're really kind of trying to race to get a traffic memo pulled together. So we did initiate and start that traffic study. It is currently being conducted, and we have been told it will be completed within the next few weeks. And so we will have more solid data for the board. We, I will turn it over to Rick, but we did receive the comments from Alexandra, thank you, on June sixth, and then also engineering comments on June eighth from the engineering department. And we also received responses from the fire department regarding our, our plan, and we can address those as well.
Thanks Rebecca, I won't burden you with a rehash of Rebecca's excellent summary of the project. So Architecture EL has been working in conjunction with Langin Engineering. Carbon LLC has directed us to provide a state-of-the-art facility and employ all best practices of design as related to site and architecture. So our response to that is to, you know, quite simply revitalize those two vacant lots, make a positive contribution to the urban fabric. And we do that by respecting the current building line fronting Main Street, screening the parking to the rear, and being sensitive to our neighbors, whom I've met a few tonight. You know, our narrative states that we will work with all stakeholders, and we take that very seriously. And I've had the opportunity to meet a couple gentlemen here and waiting for our spot, who I understand live over on Sunset. So we're maintaining that tree buffer to the rear, adding new vegetation where appropriate to soften the lines of the parking lot and the, the architecture that fronts Main Street. So, you know, in summary, the, what, what we presented, you know, reflects what we consider to be a sensitive neighbor to the surroundings of Main Street and Tuxbury at large.
All right, anything else to add?
I just thought the, I was supposed to say, sorry. My voice is usually loud enough to boom across the room. In regard to the comments, we've reviewed all the comments, we can respond in depth. We don't see anything that we are particularly, think will be problematic. You know, there, a lot of it is just indicating dimensions where dimensions are noted, so that as the drawings develop, we will certainly call out those dimensions, add details where appropriate. But we believe that the project as presented conforms to all current requirements that we're aware of and were noted. And, you know, if there are any issues, we'll respond accordingly or take those as questions. Thanks.
Start with Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know we've had at least one very similar sort of sighting where the facility was gonna basically be right in, right up against in, in a residential neighborhood. There were a lot of concerns about the fencing, the lighting, security, traffic, noise. So one of the things, I guess, is, you know, I see you've got your secure dumpster area back, tucked away in the back with some reserved snow space. Generally speaking, Mike, one of my questions would be, as far as your parking lot, you know, what would you do to prevent any loitering or any, anything like that where people come in, they have their product, and then they're, you know, talking in the parking lot or anything like that? Like, wow, would you have cameras or attendants, something along that line?
My name's Rob DeFazio, I'm CEO of, or CNA, excuse me, CEO of CNA Stores. That's a great question, that gets asked a lot. What we normally have done in, in the past from an operational standpoint is we have a security guard that roams the parking lot to make sure that people aren't consuming in the parking lot, cause that's illegal by the state. We're not allowed to have that, the CCC will fine us if people are using the cannabis on, on the property. So as far as for, you know, at our stores, and what we're working with Dean and his team at Carbonair is to actually have a security person roam the parking lot, so they won't be loitering out there.
Thank you. And, I mean, from what I've seen on the plans, you're not really at the stage of having lighting and photometrics and all of that yet?
We did provide photometric data, so that is represented in our submission. And, but I would sum it up as our approach to lighting is to provide minimum, you know, footcandle measurements as required and full cutoffs, dark sky compliance, you know, in, in accordance with current attitudes and best practices towards lighting. We don't want, you know, overly lit project, but it needs to be safe. And we want to make sure that we don't overspill light beyond the limits of our boundary.
Yeah, that's exactly the point, right? You want enough light to make sure that the area looks secure, but without spilling over and disturbing the neighbors.
Numerous ways we could do that, including having different levels of lighting depending on the activity of, of the store itself. You know, motion sensors and such, so that we're not continually overlit, but lit appropriately when the, the activity warrants it.
Okay, and then I noticed one of the waivers you're gonna be seeking is for a higher fence?
Possibly, we're showing a higher fence for a couple reasons. One, you know, taller is, is safer. We're not terribly concerned about the safety of it, we're, we're seeing it more as an extension of the building. So it, it presents itself more as a, as a wall up to complement the architecture. So it wouldn't be mission critical to lower that to within limits of, you know, we're not like hard and fast about building a little taller. We just think that right now it, it looks good as it fronts the street, but that's, that's open for debate.
Okay.
And that's also, I would also add that it's a secure area, we're, we're providing, it's not a requirement. But we just see it as, as an amenity to the way that it functions, it gives an extra level of safety.
Okay, I was just gonna say, you know, I'd like you to take some input from your neighbors as far as whether they want a higher fence or not. I think on the other property, they actually did like having the fence higher.
It can work both ways, yeah. I, I, for me, I, you know, we're designers, we approach things visually, you know, so that's kind of how it wound up at that height.
I mean, what's the old adage, right? Good fences make good neighbors, so good neighbors by, you know, working on a, a simple solution for the fencing. That's all I have for right now. Obviously, there's a lot to chew on with MasDOD and engineering is louder, so.
Mr. Lozak?
Yeah, so I see that this is spanning across two lots. Is there a plan to consolidate those two lots?
We suspect that that, that will be ultimately achieved, yes.
All right, and they're both the same owners too.
That's one of the problems, right.
Okay. I think one of my other kind of major concerns here with this, where the entrance and the exit is, it looks like it's gonna be right up against the Carolis Drive, which is kind of a residential complex with one entrance and one exit.
Fifty-three feet of that drive.
Yeah, it kind of looks like it's almost gonna create a four-way intersection there. Which I know we're still waiting on the traffic study for, but it seems like something that we should take into account here.
Yes, I would note is our personal engineer, uh, is that, you know, we, we conform to requirement for intersections. And then we would work with DPW regarding driveways and any concerns with opposing driveways. I think the, the near alignment with the savings bank plaza across, and Decarolus is fifty-three feet from it.
So it's a little like offset from it?
Right, it is offset, yes, but we definitely will make sure that we take a look at it once we get the traffic.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be good, and I noticed engineering already pretty much flagging the results, doing a period of it as well. So they obviously have some concerns.
It, it's fully offset from Decarolus is the point that I think it's this, it's the plaza, the next plaza that is, is not quite in the line.
And let's see what we have. I noticed you have the snow storage on top of some of the parking spaces here.
Right, so we annex the, we have like nines or plus spaces, which we annex for snow storage. So there's a couple of ways I think that we could address that. The concern might be piling snow on an impervious surface. Permeable paving is an option. We're trying to obviously minimize the re-grading and site disturbance. We can create at the expense of some more grading, we can create an off-spot, you know, beyond the paving, which would certainly, certainly be possible if that's required.
And that, that's a pretty steep hill kind of back there, right?
We have to work that, that hill, yeah, exactly. So you can see why the layout is as it is, but that is, that is adjusted.
Okay, all right. And I think the other comments, just a nice bunch of comments from engineering on stormwater. Sounds like those are all underway and in progress.
Those are all processed, and I don't see any issues with compliance with all of those.
All right, cool.
I just wanted to make one mention, trench drain, and some engineer stated that the grading actually is, is away from that trench drain, so that was just a case of indicating on the plans more clearly the direction of flow, it's not, not an issue as noted.
Okay, all right, cool. I think for now it's all my questions, again, it seems like this is pretty early on, so I'm sure I'll have more as we go forward, but that's it for me.
Mr. Duff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, you know, the topography shows a pretty flat lot there, but isn't that lot sort of slope from front to back somewhat there?
It does, I wouldn't interpret it as flat, it's, uh, there's a grade change, uh, you know, pretty much where, you can see where we've tucked in additional three spaces here, the grade shifts quite a bit as you approach March Street. So, um, that's, it's not, it's not, it's not.
So one, one of your renderings shows a little, maybe for lack of a better word, a berm. It looks like it might be between March Street and the parking lot there, is that part of your plan there? Or it's the rear, the rear view of the building?
Yeah, the renderings are, um, yeah, are more, uh, you know, flat site renderings because, you know, it's, it's, it's more of an architectural illustration of the building. But that's meant to, to show the, the overall form and volume of the building and our intentions with landscaping. But if, the renderings do not address berming and grading at this point. So as, as we develop the plans, you know, that, that can get.
Okay, so you're, you're, we're not anywhere near looking at retaining walls and that type of?
Correct, not at the rendering level, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Just at the drawing level.
Sure, understood. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to commend you guys on a great application. Everything we have, you have given us, is what we really need to review the application in the process, and I want to commend you on that. It's a lot of paper, as you can see, we deal with a lot of paper every, every meeting.
I know, we, we always.
We were gonna bring more, but we decided not to.
No, no, that's enough, we have enough, we only have a limited time to go through all this stuff as it is, so, but, uh, I also wanna, wanna, you know, commend you on the, on the design of the building. The building design is great, and it's nice, gonna blend in with the neighborhood as far as what we're doing with Tuxbury here. And also the fact that a lot of the other applications we've had for retail marijuana have been multiple retail locations on-site. So with you having that one retail component on-site, it means that if someone's coming into that site, it's for one purpose only.
Exactly.
Not to go into a, you know, variety store next door to the marijuana place, which complicates traffic and so forth. You know, if you want to get marijuana, at that location, you're going in there. I'm not going in there for beer or wine, nothing against, uh, Smitty's Liquors, but, uh, but for that reason only. And I think that's, that's an important concept for me as a board member, because this retail location is for that only, so, but, uh, and I know you have some other work to do with engineering and so forth and so on, so I won't have any comments other than that, but I, I appreciate the design and so, so forth and the paperwork, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. So the only, obviously the traffic and that kind of stuff, we have to get into it, so, you know, when we have the information, tends to be the most, no, tends to be the most important. It, it really ends up being sort of the make or break thing for all the sites, is, you know, how does the traffic really work? So until we have that, really can't go in with that. The only thing I would say, I, I don't disagree with Mr. Fattaya on, you know, the building in terms of its, its, you know, attempt to sort of fit into the structure. The only thing I would say, and we've done this with some of the others, is some of those little, you know, sort of faux things like the portico on top, you know, those little fake peaks and those, you know, the, the round sort of fake windows that go on the side, just to break up sort of the, um, the, the, the building, because this is one of those ones where because it's on the, the street, on that side street, you kind of see it from almost all angles. This isn't one of those ones where a lot of the building is hidden and you just see the front. You're kind of seeing this driving up and down thirty-eight from a lot of different, uh, different views. So, you know, while there is a back, it's not just a back, and it's not just a side the way it is in some other buildings. So, you know, I would ask that you just sort of take that into consideration. I mean, I'm not talking about reworking the world, it's more a matter of those sort of, those things that should just break it up a little bit and, you know, give it that, that, you know, that local look that we've done to some of the other, the other buildings. And, you know, they're not, they're not real, they're just decorative, you know, so, um, I think because, you know, anything's going on thirty-eight, that that's important. Because it is, you know, the major thoroughway through here, and everybody's, you know, going by this constantly, you want it to look as good as it can.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, what you started with is terrific, just maybe a little something to kind of, you know, break up that peak, you know, break up the side, just so, you know, there's a little something for folks when they're driving by, um, over and over, so. Other than that, I have nothing to add for, you know, what the others have asked about so far, like I said, traffic's the big one, so we'll wait on that. With that, I'll open it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with questions, comments, or concerns, please come up. State your name and your address, the floor is yours.
Josh Obosco, eight March Road, directly abutting this new building. You mentioned sensitivity and, you know, dealing with the environment and all that. These two vacant lots harbor all types of creatures, foxes, birds, squirrels, chipmunks. There's standing pines, there's a lot of things that, when I first come to Tuxbury, I bought the house a year ago, I was incaptivated by it, I really enjoy the area. And going up all the way to Sunset as you kind of propose, is that what's actually happening?
Uh, no, uh, it doesn't go all the way to Sunset. There's a, an area at the back that's presently tree, that's, that's maintained in this area that spikes to the rear.
Cause this is very large trees, I mean.
Yes, so, uh, of course, you know, and so I'm a lead AP, sustainable design, you know, tree hugger. And it's always a challenge to develop a site, you know, respectfully, but the very act of development has, has an impact. So, you know, the important thing is to mitigate and try to leave it, you know, as good as we can. And yes, there is, is an impact to development for sure. Yeah, this, this is a site that was previously built upon, it's, so.
Residential, it was residential, it wasn't a commercial.
But it's not, it's not, um, it's not previously undeveloped land.
It's been undeveloped for how long though?
Uh, I don't want to get into a back and forth about that though, because you just gotta keep in mind, it is zoned for what they're bringing in for.
Okay, that's understandable, but how long has it not been?
Just I want to keep it in line of, you know, a discussion about what you'd like to see try to be preserved. But an argument about it not being developed is not really.
I, I understand.
You know what I mean, so I don't want to get too far that, down that road.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So.
Sure. Um, so in, in the concept of development with, with pre-existing lots which are allowed to be developed to the quote best and highest use, you know, I believe that the, the best response is, is to take that into account and through landscaping with native species, xeriscaping, which is, you know, low water demand plants, native plants, you know, pollinator gardens, things like this. So there are many opportunities on the site to maintain that duality and relationship with nature, which is the best we can do as we.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
To revitalize our, you know.
Yeah, just see people kind of driving past and then they turn up March Road and then there, it's a dead end. Are they gonna bang a U-turn and come back down March Road and hit the store, you know? You mentioned traffic so much, it's kind of.
I, I'm, I'm maybe confused by the question. You have them coming up March Street for some reason?
Well, if you miss the building, you take a left on the March Road, it's March Road.
Right.
And it's a dead-end street. So they just, I mean, you know, you talk about traffic so much, I, I see traffic on thirty-eight, that's cool. But it's just a concern, you know, there's kids, there's people, there's women that walk, and they, you know, it's a, it's a neighborhood.
So I think the key there is clearly marked and appropriate sided. So I think the key there is clearly marked an appropriate signage. Uh, we did provide a master sign plan, uh, which is far below the allowable signage limit. But we have things like marquee signs to designate where the entrance is. And, uh, so I I think that the entrance is is, uh, and one of the things that we deliberately did is keep it past March Road. So that it's not, you know, opposing it.
Yeah, I'm not against it. I'm just asking questions, that's all. Been here for a long time and, you know.
Absolutely.
So to to the residents' comments, so, um, you know, you have a few of the renderings up there, but I think, and we've asked for it before. But if you can, you know, create some of the renderings that include the, you know, what you're gonna have there, how it's gonna look, you know, with the building in. But with also with the landscaping, makes it a little easier visually for folks when they're trying to evaluate what they think. Okay, this is what it's supposed to look, you know, the shot sort of coming across the street or from the side, you know, uh, March Street sort of looking at the side.
Right.
You know, and that kind of thing. I think it helps, you know, not just obviously this resident, but anyone else who's trying to figure out, okay. When I'm driving down thirty eight or I'm on the side street, what does this look like? You know, not just the building, it's important. But what does the whole thing look like to us? So I mean, when you're doing your renderings, keep that in mind and keep that in, you know, the the what we see. Cause otherwise we're gonna ask for it separately anyways, so just easier to do it in one shot.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
No problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns, sir? Just give your name and your address. The floor is yours.
Joe Turcot, Five Sunset Road. Um, and I just was commenting with this gentleman earlier. My main concern is we are residents and Jonathan's lived up by there before. And, uh, it's pretty quiet in that sense, but, uh, all we're looking for is to make sure that there's a buffer zone. A fence of some sort so that people can't be cutting through. We don't want that. And the usage of the, uh, parking in the back with a dumpster. Go through a, uh, situation with dumpsters already where sometimes six o'clock, five o'clock in the morning. All of a sudden it sounds like a bomb going off when they drop the the thing. But that's my main concern is the lighting showing up on the residuals. We've had that before. And it just trying to mitigate it so that we don't have that problem.
So I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll have the the limitations on the trash pickup built into the permit. So we'll limit, you know, any early, any early morning pickups and that way that'll alleviate that problem because, you know.
That and it, like I said.
We do have the residents right there, so.
It's it's right there, so and it's, uh, like I said, a a buffer zone of sorts so that you're not putting up with noise or anything like that. Uh, and I'm gonna assume they're gonna be running at regular business hours.
Uh, we did this earlier. It's ten to eight is the.
Right.
Limit period. That's, you know, they could be less than that, but that's their max.
Like I said, the only, the only thing we're worried about is is lighting, the dumpster. And mitigating to have people cutting from bottom come up to Sunset. It's it's terrible to to say this, but, you know, as somebody had mentioned, fences make good neighbors. So that's, uh, that's all I'm asking.
Very good. And then you guys coordinate, obviously. Alright, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Mr. Turcot, regarding cutting through, they're gonna have a fence, it's gonna be all completely fenced in, correct? So if they go into the parking lot, they're gonna have to climb the fence to get up to your place.
Well.
And regarding the lighting, also the lighting cannot leave the property. It'll be, there'll be hoods on it, so there'll be no light intrusion to you guys or anybody else.
That's my biggest worries of being disturbed by.
We handle that.
We've had that situation before where the lighting lights up the back of the houses and so on, so.
If that does happen for some reason, then you can always come back to us and we have a right to bring them back in or whoever it is back in to review the lighting and change the lighting. So it doesn't, doesn't, uh, leave the property, so.
Okay, thank you.
Part of what we do on the board here, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, Linda Conklin, Two Madeline Road. I just want to just say about the traffic. The traffic, I've lived there for twenty five years. It's consistently, year over year, been worse and worse. And it's to the point now, when we go to exit off of March Road to get out on thirty eight, you can sit there for like five minutes. Just trying to edge your way out onto thirty eight. It's like impossible now with the traffic. And this is just gonna add to it, so I'm not looking forward to it. I I'm sorry to the panel, but I'm really not looking forward to more traffic. That's it.
Thank you. And again, just for anybody to stay, you know, we haven't really addressed traffic because we're waiting on the traffic study. At which point we will discuss it more, uh, depending on what the results are.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else? Questions, comments, or concerns?
Yeah, just some comments. Mark McNeil, fourteen March Road. Um, yeah, it's great to clean up those two lots because it it is an eyesore. But, uh, we have so much empty retail space, I would consider plans of of, uh, going into an existing space. Because, um, I just read that cannabis is not doing as well as it once was in Massachusetts. A Florida-based company, True Leave, is leaving, um, pulling out of Mass, closing three stores and shutting down a production facility. So, um, you know, I would recommend, you know, an existing space because, um, you know, we could have another empty space in a couple of years. So it might be a good looking space, but, um, and security person sounds great. Owner of Mavericks was supposed to have a space, a security person to comply with the regulation, but that didn't really come to fruition, so.
Right, but just remember, the difference here is that this is regulated differently than your average business. Those aren't, those aren't optional. That's not, there's not a question because they're gonna get shut down by the overseeing agency. They don't comply with the security requirements.
Okay.
It's just a little bit different because of that, which is one of the reasons why, as a general rule, these are such highly secure businesses, unlike almost any other business. So it's regulated and controlled and monitored.
Okay, yeah, again, just consider vacant spaces first and consider the market too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other questions, comments, or concerns? Going once, twice, bring it back to the board.
I just have one more sort of interrogatory. I know you're gonna come back again, but the, I just did a quick look at the grading and whatnot. So the grading of the building is gonna be at around a hundred and six to a hundred and seven feet. And then it's a hundred and eighteen feet at the back edge of the property. Would the fence go on top of the one eighteen? Or would it be down at grade level? Meaning a seven foot fence when you have an eleven foot.
Differential.
Increase in landscape.
Yes, we'll have to work that in concert with, um, civil engineers and see what what comes up that makes sense and probably generate some site sections.
Okay, so I'm just thinking that the properties in the back, the the top of your, the bottom of your roof line is gonna be level with their foundations. Which means.
Right.
That your roof is now sixteen feet, did I do that right? Fifteen feet higher, right? You're going from eleven feet to twenty six feet, that pitch. So that's, that's gonna be an eighty foot wide blank billboard to, which could be a great thing. Could be a noise dampener or something like that, but, um, again, just another thing to to maybe discuss with the neighbors as far as, are they okay with that? Would they rather see it a little bit lower so they have a view of the trees on the other side of thirty eight or anything like that? Just, those elevations look a little tricky, but the main thing that sent me down that road was the idea of a seven foot fence behind an eleven foot landscape grade. Wouldn't, I don't think it would really do much other than maybe clean up the, you know, makes the site look great from the inside, but doesn't really do much for the neighbors, um, in their view.
I presume so. Thank you. Alright, so with that, uh, we have seven thirty on the twenty sixth. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion cash. Guys, see you guys next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to agenda item J, which is sixteen ninety five Shawshin Street. Site plan review and land disturbance continued from our five twenty two meter. Are you not here? Alex? Alex? Unless they got frustrated with our speed at which we were moving the front front.
No, I don't think they were here at all.
They were on the hallway. I looked at the clock here.
Oh, alright, here we go.
Sure, they get to hang out in the hallway. We're stuck in here.
I thought you were lucky, you missed this one.
We can actually prop that door open too, or this job should be over there. Unless someone came to the door.
Do we want to have nine thirty five now? Yeah, well, it'll be after this, because they weren't here. I mean, that's, you know what I mean? Kick it to give them a break, but I'm not gonna sit anybody here down just to, you know what I mean? So much for profit.
I was just thinking the same thing every time we open up.
Jonathan, would you, just, we're not gonna be able to leave it open. It's like an echo chamber. Alright, gentlemen, once you're settled and give your names for the record, I will, um, ask that you not reiterate if you don't have to.
I had the report for Mr. Chairman.
Um, thank you. Um, and just stick to whatever's new, but you guys, it's your, it's your time, so you do what you like, but. Okay, the floor is yours.
Jim Stateras, Pierre Tuxbury, um, DBA Smith Davis.
Jeff Ketteritt, civil engineer with VHP. Good evening, everyone. Appreciate it. Uh, do you want to move this? By the way, yeah, problem. So we will, uh, we will keep it to the point. Just want to run through some quick updates with you for the sixteen ninety five Shawshin application. What's up here is the plan we presented to you last meeting. Uh, just as a quick overview of where we had left off. We're still in the process of review at the engineering department and and planning and conservation as well. Most of those being a result of closing out our DPW engineering comments. So we are close to resolving those, mostly utility related, but I just want to flash some updates for you. And that was included in the last submission to those folks. This is the latest plan here. Uh, modifications, we're really limited to removal of about, uh, three parking spaces. Created some more landscape area between the buildings. So we have a net total of seventy two parking spaces now, down from the seventeen ninety five. But still well over the zoning requirement. Um, that allowed us to create some landscape space and provide some additional sidewalks, uh, within the site interior. Just to improve access to the building. And that's really the only site plan update. Uh, we have, uh, followed up, updating our landscape plan too. One other thing we heard is making sure that, uh, proposed plantings and utilities were coordinated and we'll make sure that continues. So we're continuing to overlay, uh, proposed utilities with with the landscaping plan. And clarifying in the landscaping that any substitutions will come back to the board, uh, ahead of construction for approval. We also put together a rendering here. I think that was another question that came up at our last hearing, so wanted to present that to you folks. And Alex, we're happy to submit this with so many updated material, but, uh, and we have, uh, Joe Taton here as well. Need to speak to anything on the building side, but. And lastly, uh, our intent is to, uh, conform with the signage requirements in the bylaw. Uh, we're anticipating a freestanding monument sign, uh, one at each of the driveway locations. We have some photos. This is of, uh, the other facility in, uh, in Lowell, but wanted to show those as an example, uh, with the intent to. To, uh, at the sixteen ninety five site. So these will all get incorporated into the revised plans that we'll use in the doubts, uh, along with resolution of the DPW comments. And I believe those are all our updates, but happy to answer any other questions or, uh, any feedback.
Alright, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
I I I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I'm fine. Thank you.
Mr. Lozada?
Um, I just think on the planting plan, just to highlight something that's come up a couple of times. If there are any changes, bring it to us early so we can kind of work with you all and review it rather than doing it and then waiting till the end and having it being different. But, uh, I think for now that's my only comment.
Mr. Fattaya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of comments. I like the sign. Put the nice stonework on there. Nice. And actually, the building design looks great. So let me ask you, I'm not, just to refresh my, is it one retail space going in here or is there somebody else besides you?
So we're going to just use approximately forty five hundred square feet under the proposed retail right there at the bottom of the building.
Okay.
And then we're gonna, the proposed office is just gonna be for us, for our, for our corporate office.
Okay, so it's all one re.
It's all us, yeah.
All all one retail marijuana building, so forth, so on.
I mean, that's it. There's gonna be no other tenants in there. We currently rent an office space on Roger Street across from our store in Lowell. Where there's about seven or eight of us that work out of there every day. So we would get rid of that and just move right there.
Okay, yeah, good. Yeah, I mean, I like the design. Those couple spots reduces not bad. You know, providing you have enough, uh, snow stories and all that stuff, so, but, uh, looks good. Uh, no comment. That's it.
Alright, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much in the same, same place. I know you said you weren't a hundred percent sure on the sign yet, how you would do, but I would recommend using that sign.
Yes.
Cause I think that looks, um, ideal. I think that'll fit both with, you know, it's it's a nice look, but it also fits nicely with the way you've, the building's designed. Colorwise and all that, so I think it, nothing jumps out too much that way. And I think that that's, that'll work, um, up in that area. Other than that, since you still have some other stuff you gotta sort sort out, that's it for, uh, for right now. With that, I'll open it up to the audience. Questions, comments, or concerns?
Good evening again, gentlemen. David Norman, thirty five Kingston Road. I'm still there, although I, it's been a long while. What I'd like to do is address the, uh, traffic report. I had requested it, uh, at the last meeting. Alex was kind enough to forward it to me. The, there were actually two documents, two PDF documents. One was, I think, several hundred pages with different counts. I I I'm sorry you can't see it, but up at the top it says Daskum Road from east, Shawshin Street from south, Daskum Road from west. And there's times and there's numbers there. There's several hundred pages like that. Well, there's a lot of pages. The second, that was on page forty four, so there's a lot of pages. The second is this document, which is the traffic impact and access study for the proposed dispensary. And what I printed out was, uh, page one, which is the executive summary. And on this, it's, it reads, quote, "This report identifies existing traffic operating parameters on key roadways and intersections within the study area. Evaluates the anticipated traffic volume increases as a result of the proposed project. Analyzes the project's traffic-related impacts, determines the project's access egress." It goes on and on, okay? And then on page number forty four, section five, it's recommendations and conclusions. There are three sections to this. Project access, level of service slash congestion mitigation, and conclusion. It's three pages from forty seven to forty nine. The recommendations, um, are basically recommendations for the site itself. Different, making sure the, the, uh, emergency vehicles can turn around and things like that. I'm not gonna get into that part. The level of service slash congestion mitigation. It mentions Shawshin Street and Vale Street. There is no rec, there's no mention in this document on conclusions of East Street, Daskum Road, and Shawshin Street. None, and yet. Page upon page upon counts with Daskum Road, Shawshin Street, and East Street.
Alright, so just before we, your traffic person isn't here, right?
Uh, correct.
Okay, so without knowing for absolute sure what you're looking at, if it's talking about mitigation, and don't hold me to it because I'm not a traffic engineer. Generally, that would be where they would say when they think there is something that's needed. So if it's not making any recommendations for any changes at East, at East Street and Shawshin, it's because they're saying. They're not recommending any kind of mitigation changes to what exists now. Meaning what's, what they're proposing isn't causing a high enough issue at whatever street you want to talk about. To require any kind of mitigation suggestion.
Okay.
The only one that it sounds like they're making a suggestion for would be Shawshin and Vale.
Okay, Mr. Fattaya earlier mentioned the hundred car train, uh, and and the fact that the traffic backs up there. That's not addressed.
Right, which we did mention to them when I asked about, because, and the answer that we got back, part of it is because there is no set schedule, which is one of the problems. part of it is, is because there is no set schedule, which is one of the problems with trying to-
That, that doesn't, that doesn't alleviate the traffic problems for people who live or about that area. There's also, uh, the, the lady in the previous one mentioned there was only one point two accidents on that intersection of Daskum Road and East Street, and Shawshank Street. I must've seen every single one of them, because over the past two, past several years, there's been several. There's no mention of any potential accidents on Frontage Road and, and, and Daskum Road. And there are plenty of accidents there, and there'll be traffic coming from ninety-three, I assume. I, I, I'm not gonna, I won't guarantee it, but I'd be very, very skeptical to think that there's not gonna be traffic coming from ninety-three, both the southbound and the northbound exit off of ninety-three. There's plenty of accidents there when people are trying to get on Frontage Road, going towards Andover from Tewksbury and taking a left-hand turn on, on Frontage Road to get up on ninety-three. So, I'm not sure, you know, where, where people think the cars are gonna come from. They're gonna come from tho, those areas, and there's gonna be a lot of traffic in this. Believe me, I mean, I, I don't doubt that the women's statistics were correct, but I've seen plenty of accidents on, on Shawshank and East Street, Daskum Road. And I'm really concerned about the traffic there. In addition to which, we had another, I mean, not that it, we had another meeting earlier for the Holton Bugby, there's gonna be more traffic coming from that. So, cumulatively, and then, uh, then there's, cumulatively, there's more and more traffic that's gonna be there. So, whether it's individually or not, it's still gonna impact the people who live on East Street or that, on, you know, past Shawshank Street. And I, I'm really concerned about, you know, the, the amount of traffic that's there and the, and, and what's gonna be involved with it. I think this mentions, their document mentions about five hundred vehicles. And I thought, and I don't have the exact numbers with me, so correct me if I'm wrong or mistaken, that they said last meeting, that it would start off at about five hundred vehicles, and we're hoping it's gonna go up to eight hundred vehicles. So, I mean, there's lots and lots of traffic already on that, on that street. And you drive down from Andover to, down Daskum Road to East Street in the wintertime at four thirty-five o'clock in the afternoon, when the sun is directly west and you're facing it, and it, it's dangerous enough as it is, let alone adding additional traffic to it. So, um, I don't know, you know, what, what impact you think the traffic, I mean, clearly, having a, a retail store would bring in more revenue, more taxes, and more benefit to the town. But at what cost is it to the rest of the people who live in that particular area? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, what I'll suggest is, bring your traffic engineer back in, so we can hit on some of this stuff the next time, just to kind of close the loop. I don't wanna try to interpret the report and explain numbers, because I was told there'd be no math. And so, I'll leave that to someone else who doesn't go cross-eyed every time they look at a number. So, you know, why don't we do that, and that way we can address that, cause I don't wanna speculate on the answers to any of the questions that we just had. It would be easier to have an expert come in and, uh, address that.
Mr. Chairman, I know that their study has already been commissioned, but one of the things that I liked about the studies that were commissioned later by Holton Bugby is they took into account two retail dispensaries on Shawshank Street being in operation. Maybe if you, I don't know, I don't wanna put an undue burden or cost on you, but maybe if they could just give you a little bit of a addendum as far as, look at the Holton Bugby situation and, and see, you know, if that, how that would cumulatively impact the traffic associated with your establishment. Just so we're have a, obviously, we have a concern about Shawshank as a total.
Yeah, it's just, I wanna be careful in getting in a situation of making people go backwards, because they can only do what they could do when they ran the traffic reports at their time, and everybody that piggybacks off that has to deal with whatever comes ahead of them. You know, it's kind of an endless circle if we try to keep sending people back to account for everything. Yeah, if, if that's something that can be discussed, you know, based on whatever information they, they have access to, that's fine. But I don't wanna reinvent the wheel of another traffic study, you know what I mean? So, just understand that, you know, that would be an undue burden on the petitioner to make you go backwards. Everybody comes after you, has to deal with what's in front of them and account for it, so. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Alright, seeing none. So, obviously, you guys still have a few things you gotta sort out. So, we will do, I have seven thirty-five, so. Have a motion to continue to seven thirty-five on the twenty-sixth.
So, move.
Motion made, do I have a second? Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, I'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, that brings us back to agenda item B three, which is nine thirty-five Main Street, partial occupancy discussion. Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, before, before you guys go too far, let, let me just ask the board, because I, you know, does everybody understand what's being asked here about the, the occupancy on the units?
Yeah, with thirty thousand foot view, it was permitted as a single opening, basically, certificate of occupancy, the whole property opens, and now they wanna open certain sections of it before one hundred percent completion.
Yes, no, in, in that, we didn't address phasing, as a general rule, at least in my experience on the board. The only time we've ever really mentioned it is when we have giant projects that are literally going in huge chunks and could be years apart. That's the only time that I think I can ever recall on the board where we've actually mentioned phasing in permit, only because of that, as opposed to like a smaller, you know, project. But that's gist of it, yeah. I mean, the reason they're here is because we didn't specifically mention one way or the other.
Okay.
So. Alright, so, gentlemen.
Good evening, my name is Michael Secconi, I'm the owner of the project. Mario Oliveri is the project, he's the manager of the project. It was not permitted that way. It was not permitted as one. And we're not, I'm not asking for partial occupancy. There are eight duplexes, one triplex. Each one of them has their own separate distinct building permit application. And I'm not asking to partially occupy any one of the buildings at all. I'm asking to occupy them. First meeting with the building commissioner on site, he's brought to me, it was first time I ever met him, and Mr. Bert Nasi is a fellow, new to the town. I've been in the town for twenty-five years. And he said to me, he says, "Mike, I hope you're gonna, I hope you're gonna pull individual permits so that you can occupy these as you complete them." And I said, "Of course I am." I said, you know, "I've been, I've been waiting five years to close on the land." The Board of Selectmen voted six and a half years ago to sell me the land. The town was unable to sell it to me until eight months ago. Had nothing to do with me. I should've, I should've built this project five years ago. The electrical issue had nothing to do with the town. I made the application for permanent power twelve months ago. National Grid couldn't provide it. I had multiple conversations with people in the town, the assistant town manager specifically. He tried, we all tried, he, he made calls on our behalf. I located transformers in Minnesota, exactly has specified by the same manufacturer. I reached out to National Grid, I said, "Guys, can I buy these transformers?" They said, "No, we won't hook 'em up if we didn't supply them." I said, "Wait a second, it's the exact same manufacturer, the exact same specification." They said, "If we didn't supply them, we won't." And then that became a political football, not political in, in a negative way, within National Grid. Had nothing to do with politics in the town of Tewksbury, it was all a National Grid. So, again, you know, I, I, I need clarification, if you're not gonna allow me to occupy these buildings according to the, um, building permits that we've acquired, then I need to know why. Which law, you know, it's, I said to the building commissioner, I said, "Show me the law, there's nothing left to talk about." And I, what I found out since then is it's his interpretation. And I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a guy that spent many years trying to build this project, trying to take that old police station that sat there for god knows how long, and make it into something better for the town. If the town of Tewksbury needs housing units, everywhere in Massachusetts, we need housing units. Now we can't open them up. They're ready to go. They've been sitting there for, I, I have, you know, eight units that have been completely finished for five months. Sitting there doing nothing. I have, you know, ten, eleven, and eight, nine are moments behind. And, you know, again, one of the reasons that was expressed to me was, one of the things was first, well, you know, what if you don't build a commercial building? What do you mean, what if I don't build a commercial building? None of that property's for sale. I live in the town of Tewksbury, my business is located in the town of Tewksbury. I'm gonna hold and rent those myself. So, you know, I'm not gonna build a, I already pulled the permit for the, I wanted to start with the commercial building, one, two, three, build them exactly in order. So, one would say, "Well, why didn't you start there, Mike?" Well, because the town of Tewksbury didn't have the easements secured yet. And if, the board may be aware, maybe not remember, cause you have so much on your plate, but there was a sewer problem over there when it was the old police station. And the town of Tewksbury had to go in there at least two or three times a year. The, the old line didn't run well. I don't know what the problem was, the pitch or, you know, it was just an old line. As part of our project, what we did is we built a brand-new line that's not used by our project, that's a transmission line that was there. So, it made sense that we would give, you know, Tewksbury a new sewer line, because you were giving me a new development. So, it's kind of like, okay. And then, when it came time to start construction, they said, "Well, timeout. The easements have to go to town meeting." Okay, those numbers away. Uh, that's why I didn't start building one, two, three, four, five, six, with the commercial component is in unit one. First building on the left as you enter from the street. So, do you guys have any questions that I could answer a few that may-
So, we'll start, start with Mr. Fertaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I recall this project, Mr. Secconi, when you started. I have no problem allowing you to go ahead and start occupying those properties. How many of them are affordables? I know we did some affordables.
There are three affordable.
Right.
Yes.
So.
And that's because we rounded up.
Right.
You know, if you, when we did that, when you, the actual math came out to something in fractions, so we rounded up to three.
With that being said, that's a plus for Tewksbury. And I was here, I don't think my other board members were here at the time, I think Mr. Johnson was.
I think Chairman Johnson was.
Def, he was definitely, definitely here, but.
I, I predate you.
I know, but.
Kinda have to be.
But I said three, I said three of my members, and those, those are the three new members, so forth, and so I know he was here, but that's why I said three of them. But for my new members, and I know Mr. Johnson's gonna agree too as well, but I think, Mr. Secconi complied with everything we asked of him when he did his development. In the back of the development, there's twenty, I think, parking spaces that are provided for the elderly that were part of this project. He, he approved, he, he okayed everything. We did some landscaping back there, they have access from the elderly apartments down to Main Street.
We put sidewalks in, that's correct, Mr. Fertaglia.
Right, I recall, I remember, I was here and-
Connecting the Tewksbury housing property to the sidewalks out now, which are all brand-new, they can come out and walk right down to the, this facility, continue down on thirty-eight.
So, my opinion, to my board members as well, that we allow Mr. Mr. Secconi to go ahead, start occupying these properties, which should've been done probably before. You know, unfortunately, it hasn't been done. You should've had them ready to go and occupied by now, you know, and I know you've complied with everything we asked of you back in the day. So, in my opinion, I would vote affirmatively that, that you let you go ahead and get these places rented, so.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yep.
So, I'm, I'll just take, I'm gonna take it out of order this time, just because, as many mentioned, because I was here for this the last time.
Yep.
I did have one question, on those parking spaces that they just mentioned, are they ready to go?
They are.
Okay, so they can't go because, without any occupancy, no one can come on the site?
Well, I mean, it's, y, y, tech, uh, yes, practically, is the word, practically, yes.
Okay, so, for all intents and purposes, if we don't move this along, we're depriving the use of the spaces from the housing authority that we wanted in the first place.
That is one aspect, correct.
Right.
So, for me, I can see that if I had known at the time when we were doing this, that we were gonna have to mention allowing the phasing, I would have. I, I won't speak for everybody else that was here at the time, I don't know. But it, it's not the kind of project where if I had known I would have, we wouldn't need to mention it that way, that I would not have.
Right.
Because it, it doesn't make sense to, to limit it, like I said, the only time I had known in the past that we ever referenced phasing was on large-scale, major developments, where you're talking about potentially years before the next phase is even constructed. You know, entire living areas were done before you moved on to phase two. Those are the kind of things that phasing, to me, we, you know, we dealt with, so. You know, if the units are done, if they're, well, if the towns willing to sign off on them as being occupiable, then I have no issue, on top of which, if I'm not mistaken, how many total units are there?
There are eighteen residential units and one commercial unit, as of today.
Okay, and basically, ready to go to get, uh, uh, occupancy permits, how many?
Unit ten, two, nineteen, there are two, four, sixteen, eight, ten units ready to go, ten, eleven, two seconds away.
And out of those, are any of those the affordable units?
Uh, no, we, because recently also, at, at the time of the permitting, I was never asked to designate which units. It wasn't part of the bylaw, and I, the board didn't ask me to do it, so I never designated. When I got close, I just learned of this two and a half weeks ago from the building commissioner. When I got close, they said, "You have to designate." I said, "Okay." I says, "I'll pick two, three, and four." The commercial, I says, "I'll pick two, three, and four." So, I said, "I'll designate." He asked me to, so I did. But it's not a condition of my special permit, it was granted by the planning board. So, these are new conditions that are coming on the special permit, as far as, from, from where I said. But I did, and I'll live by it. And now, with the, um, changes in the bylaw, whereas I'm in Tewksbury every day, all day, every day. Now, they've changed the bylaw so that I would also have the ability to come back before the planning board and ask to convert that one commercial unit back to residential. As of this moment in time, I have not, and we are building it exactly per the approved plans. Have not changed a thing. Because that wouldn't be right. But I do intend to, if we can get past this hurdle, I do intend to make application. As Alex knows, I've already requested a certified Mr. Footby, this again, I've started going through my checklist. I do intend to come back before the board and say, "Now, in light of what's going on on Route thirty-eight, you know, can't ask permission to convert that one commercial unit to a residential, which would make it nineteen residential units." And the caveat that I have to offer is that building, because it's commercial, was designed to have handicap access. So, now, I can offer a handicap-accessible apartment as part of that project, which there are very few, it's not, typically, that's not addressed unless the project is four hundred units. But on, on smaller projects like this, it's not in the board's purview to say, you know, "We want you to have a handicap one," because there are rules and bylaws, and that's what we all need to go by. But I would come back and I would use that, you know, when I do complete that application properly, and I get my moment before the board, that's what I'm gonna ask for. And I think that a handicap-accessible unit is a, is a really nice way to round out that, um, development. So, there'll be, there will be three affordable, one handicap-accessible, and then Mario was gonna live there. He's gonna manage the project, he's gonna move into number fifteen, and he's gonna live there. Um, and, and I don't know if you guys know who Mario is. One of the most decorated officers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Came out of Somerville, took six at point-blank range, and is sitting here next to me.
Thank you for your service.
I feel the same way, Mr. Johnson. So, that's just a human interest story, it's nothing to do with what, what we have before the board tonight.
Well, good enough. Like I said, I, I have no issue with doing the phased, you know, the phased permitting for the site. Like I said, you know, I would've done it back at the, when we did this, you know, this is, I, I don't worry as much about precedent with this anyways, because this is unique anyways, because it's also connected up to the-
Housing.
Housing authority. So, anybody who says, "Well, you did this, you didn't do that," it's different. Show us where you're dealing with the housing authority, and now you're talking about apples to apples. So, for my purposes, I'm all set, so.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for your service. Sorry, yo.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Mike, um, I took a ride through your project today, it's a really, it's a good-looking project.
Thank you.
And I noticed that, you know, the, the whole-
And I noticed that, you know, the whole right side, basically, twelve through nineteen, I mean, they look from the outside, I didn't look at the inside, but they look hundred percent. You have grass seed down, you have landscaping, you have, you have everything but your, your top coat and your line striping, basically, by, by the look of things.
We requested final inspections prior to now, they were delaying.
Yeah.
To some unknown reason.
Right, right, so, I, I, it seems to me that, you know, that this is just more or less a, you know, like a, a, a modification, basically, a relatively minor modification to, to the existing site plan from, that, that, that the board passed in the past, and I don't have any problem in the world going on, going ahead with that. I just would like to just ask a couple of questions off.
Sure.
The, and, and that is fantastic news about the ADA compliant unit, I mean, that's, now, would that be a market unit, or would that be a?
Be a market rate.
The only thing is, I just wanna be careful, because that's a whole different permitting hearing and whatnot, so if we go too far down that line, the fact that it may become that is nice, but I don't wanna convolute the two things, because this is an administrative action. That requires a public hearing, I wanna be careful that we don't go too far in any way, make this because of that kind of thing.
I understand, I understand.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, the bylaw does say that for the commercial to be converted to residential, that it is to be affordable. So the eighty percent AMI would be applicable.
Even more marketable. You know, I, a quick question I had, I was noticing the lot lighting, is that, but a hundred percent solar, or is there a wire underneath there? Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Those are solar, and the thing about it, as you drive in, at nighttime, they tone down.
Yeah.
And when you pull in, it senses the vehicle, and then they stop to light, brighten up. So if, if there's no activity on the site, they're at a certain level of light, and then if you walk by or drive by, they brighten up.
It'll brighten up a little bit.
And we've also put, because of uniformity, and because of those sidewalks, where the parking lot lighting was directed toward the parking lots, I've decided what we installed there was photocell. All of the front door lights on each unit is on a photocell, so that they will be on from dawn to dusk. As soon as it gets dark out, they'll go on, and when the light comes out in the morning. So that's if anyone is walking from the Housing Authority. The parking lot lights aim towards the parking lot. So in that, in that walkway that we installed at the request of the board to continue that path out to Route thirty-eight, Main Street, those lights on that side will be on at night. So people will not be, you know, walking down a dark sidewalk.
Another quick question I had was the, and this may, is probably more for building inspector, you know, typically, you know, before the building inspector issues a certificate of occupancy, you provided with the, you provided the town with the ASBILs. Are you guys there yet? Yeah, okay, okay, cool.
They've been peer-reviewed by Jim Hanley, who's at, right here tonight.
Yeah.
And in fact, um, we reinstalled an eighty-foot run of ADS drainpipe, because it was off of the plan by two hundredths of a foot.
You really messed that one up, huh?
Two hundredths of a foot. And there was gonna be a note on the ASBILs, because Civil Design was doing my peer review. And I said, if there's gonna be a note on the ASBIL, we'll redo it. And we redid it, sent a crew over there, and lost a crew day, thousands, thousands of dollars for two hundredths of a foot.
Well, if that's the biggest mistake you made all day, then you did okay.
Thank you.
The, uh, I, I would imagine, I mean, it looked like that you had a gang of workers on there today, that the left-side units are gonna be.
Right, right behind.
Right, yeah, right behind, you know? So, and, and then, but then, now, for, I just wanna make sure that, so like, like, in this instance here, we're gonna, we're gonna make this administrative change to the, to the site, a previous site plan review. You know, and, and your paving isn't done yet, you know, your final paving. So when, when it comes to getting your CO for the remainder of the units, I would assume that everything else will be done, your, your top coat, your line striping, your, your, and so on and so forth, or?
Within two weeks, the final paving will be done. The only, what's been holding us up is as soon as the foundation is poured on that last building, which is one, two, and three, the commercial slash residential. We're gonna close that, you see, we chased the curb, right, granite curb throughout the whole place, right around the site, and it starts in front of that building. Because tomorrow, I believe, at noon time is the last foundation pour. There'll be pump trucks and concrete trucks, as soon as that's done, we backfill, we close the curb up, clean everything out of the parking lot, there's no need for those.
Get rid of all your staging materials and all that stuff.
Material staging.
Yeah, yeah.
Final pave it, and stripe it.
Yeah.
I live on Frasier Lane.
Yeah.
In Tewksbury, right on the corner of Andover Street and Frasier Lane. I built my house there in two thousand eighteen. That road's still in binda. Two thousand eighteen, this is twenty-three. That road's still in binda.
I don't know what to say about that.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just saying.
Anyways, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, it looks like that you have all the bases covered, and I, and I think it's a great idea, and I think it's good that we should help clear it up.
Mr. Zon?
Yeah, sounds like you get a great project here. I mean, I would love if some of the affordable units were some of the ones that you're trying to phase in early, but in favor of it, either way.
We're weeks away, it's not, yeah.
And, you know, as you know, we have a.
We're working with the Tewksbury Housing Authority as well to try and, you know, to, there's some, there's some things that we have to do to them. And we're in the process of doing that now. So they can then pull their lottery and bring the people in the way they, the way they do their thing, it's their call.
Cool, great to hear, as you know, we have a big need for affordable housing.
Building security would be there.
Even better. No further questions.
Mr. Chairman. Bulletproof though.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I guess, so for, in this particular instance, you pulled separate building permits for each building?
Yes, sir, I did.
So, I mean, to me, I kinda feel like if the site is, as long as the site is capable of occupancy, you know, people aren't gonna be driving over debris, or dirt roads, or gravel. I mean, it just makes sense to my mind. You pull separate building permits, that particular building is ready, it's been inspected and signed off under that permit. The certificate of occupancy usually goes with the building permit. And I don't know if this is something where we have to maybe just clarify that this is okay in the future, if it's implied in the future, or if we just have to check ourselves and ask when a prospective developer like Mr. Secconi comes before us, are you planning on opening everything all at once, or are you gonna open things as they become ready? And then we could say, well, we have some conditions, we wanna make sure the sidewalks are in, pedestrian lighting is in, parking lots are in, things like that. But as far as what you're requesting of us tonight, I, I think it makes perfect sense.
I've built buildings in the past, just so, so, so you guys understand that I understand. If it was a podium with fifty units, okay, and I was coming in, single building, podium, single building, with, you know, the required entryways and elevators, and I was coming in saying, I wanna occupy half of the building, that's a totally different handle. Because these duplexes are one hundred percent complete, both sides. I wouldn't even come before the board and ask to occupy half of the duplex. Because the units fly our walls, electrical, rely on each other, the completed building is the completed duplex. There are eight of them, and one triplex, as I opened it.
What do we, what do we need here?
No, just to address some of Mr. Champa's comments, that this was primarily a concern with the mixed-use developments, because we did have instances where, where developers were trying to build and occupy, build and occupy one by one, but skirting around, um, doing the affordable units, skirting around doing the commercial, and not really committing to the project as a whole, and that was really the concern, was, and certainly, nothing against the specific, specific project, but holistically, that's, that was the concern, was that there was, the town loses its leverage. We permitted this project a certain way, and then the way folks were attempting to build it out was causing some concern. Certainly, again, not with Mr. Secconi's project individually, but on the whole, that's what the issue was. Where we're not really seeing those mixed-use developments come in anymore, I mean, we've been operating under this bylaw for over a year now, and we haven't seen one come in. So I think that the likelihood of this becoming an issue going forward is less so, but certainly, we can take it into consideration if a project like this does come up.
And Alex, I would, I would, may I speak? Alex, I would suggest that, you know, I'll take my developer's hat off and put my resident of Tewksbury hat on it. And I would say that I think as a resident of Tewksbury, that's something we should clarify. So that when any particular builder or developer says, shh, point me to the law, then I can open the book and there's the bylaw, there's nothing left to talk about. Because once it's a bylaw, there's nothing left to talk about. So I would suggest as a, you know, resident, that we, if it needs to be clarified, which I believe it does, because I searched high and low to find what was holding me back from getting these occupancy permits, and I couldn't find it. And I used local architects that have been, you know, dealing and building in Tewksbury for many, many years, they couldn't find it, they couldn't point me to it. I asked the building commission to point me to it, he couldn't point me to it. So I would say as a resident, please, maybe we should clarify that.
Sure, I think that's fair, typically with zoning, when something is silent, it means it's not allowed, and I think that that was the broad view here. But certainly, it's, it's worth clarifying, if that's something that we think would be beneficial.
All right, so what do we, what do you need from us? Is it a vote that says?
Yeah, a vote in the affirmative that you will allow while Mr. Secconi is constructing the last building in his project, that they may move forward moving folks in, on the other ones following all of their applicable state laws.
So then we have a, looking for a motion to allow occupancy permits to be issued to individual units.
Which, which unit?
Well, no, I don't wanna do that.
Oh, you don't wanna do that?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to vote.
Individual units, as they're completed, they can be brought in for, when you use the phrasing phased, occupancy permits as they are completed and can come for inspection, even though the entire project is not complete at that time. Okay, so we need a motion for that?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion with a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Right, good luck.
Thank you very much, John, I appreciate your efforts.
All right, that brings us to correspondence, we didn't have any correspondence, correct? All right, and then that brings us to the ridiculously new, new-named section.
Come here.
Other business, any other business?
I have some other business, Mr. Chairman, and I, I was made aware of a fact of an issue at Foster Lane. I don't wanna bring this up again, but we had that land, land disturbance permit come in front of us, and they removed a piece of that Foster Lane from the application, I believe, right? So then I was made aware of the fact that he went in and paved that particular, was there a pavement down there?
No.
There's no pavement area down there?
No.
I thought he, I thought I was told that it was an area, they cut it, they cut forty-foot-wide area down to that area, to that location.
No.
I didn't drive by, but.
No, there's no permits for paving, and in fact, that land disturbance permit is under appeal. And the issue of access is still being discussed, and I believe there's another pending appeal for the zoning board of appeals case, so no.
Well, I would go out tomorrow myself personally and visit that site.
The conservation agent was out today, there's been no paving.
No paving?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
There's restoration of adjacent wetlands due to a violation, failed, a failed silt fence had to be repaired, and silt, sediment had to be removed, but there's been no paving.
No paving, okay, 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 well, I was just wondering why it was, if that was the case.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, so if that wasn't the case, then, uh, fine, but, but he shouldn't be allowed to do anything down there, because that was the agreement, right? Like, he took that old late land, yeah, here, off the land disturbance permit.
Yes.
All right, good, okay.
Any other, other business? Seeing none, take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good evening, we'll see you next time.